Good morning, everyone. Okay, thank you. We will call this meeting to order. And I'd like to start by welcoming our newest member, Dr. Carl Larson, who is here on behalf of the Lieutenant Governor. And with that, we're very happy to have you, I should say. Another doctor on the team, as Commissioner Jackson would say. With that, we will begin, please, with a roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
President.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Nardoff.
Here.
Commissioner Preciado.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Chair Harmon.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. And now we will move to the virtual meeting procedures, please.
Okay, good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-ban.org. If you have Internet access and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the CalSPAN website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submission are available on the commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that does not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on a regular agenda item up until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have Internet access, please go to the commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the commission's staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute your phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, and now we will move to the agenda changes. Mr. Hudson.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Chair Harmon and Commissioners. I will now go over those changes. We do have several. First, Item 8A is postponed as the County of Ventura LCP amendment for the Housing Bill Implementation Plan. Item 8B is moved to consent as the County of Santa Barbara LCP amendment time extension for Senate Bill 9 and ADU ordinances. Item 8C is moved to consent as the County of Santa Barbara LCP amendment adding new cannabis odor regulations. Item 8D moved to consent, the County of Santa Barbara LCP amendment for the Telecommunication Facilities Ordinance, and I would just note that is a de minimis LCP amendment. Item 9A is postponed, the City of Santa Barbara CDP application. Item 10A is postponed, the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority CDP amendment application. Item 16A is postponed. This is a CDP application for the Mohudin Project. An Item 18A moved to consent, a City of San Diego LCP amendment for the Encanto Neighborhood. Item 18B moved to consent, the City of San Diego LCP amendment for cannabis outlet hours ordinance. And Item 19A moved to consent, that's the Hall CDP application. That concludes our changes to today's agenda, so that does bring us back to Item 4, General Public Comment. And with that, I'll turn the mic back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hudson. Okay, Chris, let's get started with public comment, please.
All right. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes during general public comment at the discretion of the chair. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I'll call your names in the order that they appear in our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and introduce yourself when you approach the speak. There is a raise-your-hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing star 9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing star 6. So it looks like today we have about 32 speakers. We'll start with people in the room. And we have Donna Brownsey.
That's our former chair, the illustrious Chair Brownsey, and I would like to give her a couple of extra minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. It's so good to see you. As many of you know, I was on the commission, but today I come to you as a member of the Fort Bragg community. Yesterday, the commission toured the largest coastal site in the city. It is almost as long as the city limits. For 100 years, it served as a heavy industrial site, mostly a lumber mill, but in later years with other heavy industrial uses. The land is in recovery now from the century-plus of toxic emissions, concretization, and other harmful uses. Since I only have a few minutes to respond to a two-hour tour, let me be brief and brutally frank. It was a beautiful day yesterday, so you could experience the wonder of a coastal headland. Why would a huge corporation like Georgia Pacific consent to an eminent domain action and transfer the land to the Mendocino Railroad for $1.3 million? 270 acres for a million dollars of coastal headland? Really? You heard that the railroad is a common carrier. In 2019, the CPUC ruled the railroad as an excursion train. That was supported yesterday by the railroad's comments that building a circular track around a housing development and a trolley next to the coastal trail, which seemed like an extension of their amusement ride operation. Marie Jones, who represented the city, did not discuss that she has contracts with both the city and the consultant who is working for the city and the railroad. The same person, Marie, who a few years ago was a consultant for the great Redwood Trail Authority and who stated in a report for them that the railroad's freight operation, if ever restored, would never pencil out. Just a footnote, the railroad hasn't operated a freight or any kind of passenger service since the early '90s. A tunnel collapse in 2013 has not been reopened, so the train goes three miles up and three miles back. You heard that there's been extensive public comment. This has not been our experience. The public is not invited to the decision-making meetings, which are held behind closed doors. Documents are dropped, usually on Friday afternoon, revealing the latest information for the Monday City Council meeting. There is no public consultation. There is only public comment on decisions already made. We were presented with maps throughout the tour that showed areas in different colors, but there was very little meaningful discussion of the challenges of toxic remediation of the ponds and grounds. One of the ponds, and the berm that you heard about, is overtopped by storm surge today. Many believe that that berm is close to failure. There was a reference to it, but not in the terms that would accurately describe the condition of that pond and berm. Further, there was no discussion of the types of industrial uses, one of which, one of many, floated by the railroad, that they're going to run these enormous trucks on train tracks to haul something unspecified, but plans are to run those tracks at the site. Several times, references were made to clean engines. This railroad did not receive any awards for this train, as their engines run on some type of diesel-type fuel. Some believe it's recycled motor oil, but we don't know. When complaints were lodged against spills, the railroad refused to allow -- I just have a couple more comments. The railroad refused to allow the county health inspectors onto the property. The commission has an outstanding lawsuit, as you know, and a violation complaint for their construction without permits. You saw that building with all the windows north of the drying sheds. That was demolished and rebuilt with no permits, despite numerous warnings from the commission. Finally, there is plenty of land in Fort Bragg for housing developments and commercial enterprises and even industrial uses. Housing developments would be welcomed by the community in areas that wouldn't block public access. Think of work-live projects that supply housing, commercial facilities, and access to beautiful headland filled with trails and recreational opportunities. It's time to let that land heal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Peter McNamie, followed by Christine Heinrich-Jostes, Vincent Poturica, and then Doug Hammerstrom.
Can you turn the mic on, please, Mr. McNamie?
Well, I'm Peter McNamie, and I have a few thoughts to share regarding yesterday's railway property tour. I have to preface my thoughts by saying I'm old enough to have voted for Proposition 20, California's Coastal Zone Conservation Act. I remember clearly the intent of voters in passing the act. Prop 20 was the public demanding the coastal zone be conserved as an asset for all Californians. What the commission heard and saw yesterday--
I'm sorry, Mr. McNamara. I'm going to have to ask you to pause. We've briefly lost quorum, so we will return and give you your full two minutes back, and you can start again. I apologize. Apologies. Thank you. If you'd like to start again, or you can pick up where you left off, it's your choice. Thank you. Sorry, sir.
I'll start by just saying that I'm old enough to have voted for Proposition 20, and I wanted to emphasize the title of that proposition, which was the California Coastal Zone Conservation Act. And the public in passing Prop 20 made it clear what they were demanding was that the coastal zone be conserved as an asset for all Californians. What the Coastal Commission heard and saw yesterday was a carefully orchestrated sales pitch by the city and the railway jointly -- and the railway's jointly paid contract planner. Please don't confuse that sales pitch as some type of community-supported vision for the future of those coastal zone headlands. The vision presented to you yesterday serves the interests of the property owner to make a profit. It does not serve the interests of the state of California to conserve the coastal zone. In practice, conserving the coastal zone, as you know, requires balancing public and private needs and priorities. It does not call for prohibition on development, but it does also mandate approval of development simply -- excuse me, let me restate that. But it also does not mandate approval of development simply for the purposes of enriching property owners and speculators. The plan the railway presented yesterday is its vision for the headlands. It has not been approved by the Fort Bragg City Council or the voters of Fort Bragg and should not be confused as such. These headlands have been subject to industrial pollution and environmental abuse for over 100 years. As the railway admits, the toxic contamination remaining on their property needs to be remediated. In my two-minute time allotment here today, it's impossible to respond to all the inaccuracies and false assertions presented on yesterday's tour. I'm just about to conclude. I will conclude by saying I hope Commissioners will not be swayed by yesterday's one-sided presentation, and I look forward to working with the commission and the commission's staff to arrive at a more balanced vision that truly fulfills the mandate of Prop 20 to conserve and protect our coastal zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next will be Vincent Poturica, Johnson Hammerstrom, John Gallo, Nicolette Houts. Vincent Poturica? Doug Hammerstrom? John Gallo? Nicolette Houts? Okay, after that will be Bill Maslach.
Nicolette Houts.
Okay, go ahead.
Do I press -- oh, all right. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nicolette Houts, and I'm the stewardship director for the Mendocino Land Trust. I'd like to speak to you about the role -- the commission's role in public access offers to dedicate and how they connect directly to the Land Trust's public access program in Mendocino County. Offers to dedicate are one of the most powerful tools the commission has to ensure permanent coastal access. Through the permitting process, the commission may require property owners to record an offer to dedicate for a public access easement when development might otherwise limit the public's right to reach the coast. These easements only become real public benefits when they are accepted by qualified entities like nonprofits, agencies, and local governments. That's where organizations like the Mendocino Land Trust come in. The Mendocino Land Trust is in the top five Offer to Dedicate accepting entities in the state of California. Of these top five, we are the only nonprofit. All the others are state agencies. Over the last 20 years, the Mendocino Land Trust has built a strong public access program, accepting over 120 public access easements in Mendocino County and stewarding more than 45 public trails within these easements on the Mendocino Coast. If you get a chance this evening before the reception at the Botanical Gardens, I encourage you to visit the nearby Belinda Point Trail. It's an excellent example of a well-loved public access trail on the Mendocino Coast. In short, the commission's role in requiring offers to dedicate, combined with nonprofit partners' ability to accept and steward them, is what makes the Coastal Act promise of maximum public access a reality on the ground. On behalf of the Mendocino Land Trust, I want to thank the commission for its role in protecting these opportunities, and we look forward to working together to ensure the public can always reach and enjoy the California coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Bill Maslach, Catherine Seek, and then Anna Newman.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Bill Maslach. I'm the superintendent for the Sonoma Mendocino Coast District for State Parks. Our district covers from Westport south to Bodega Bay, and I'm only here to speak of collaboration. Westport is -- the highway is falling into the ocean. Caltrans came up with a solution. They're armoring the bluff. They got an emergency coastal permit. They -- the Caltrans came to State Parks and said, "We'd like to work collaboratively on a holistic approach for our mitigation." And they said, "Hey, you got one mile of old abandoned Highway 1 with asphalt and road base under it." So they worked with Myers &amp; Sons. I believe they're one of the largest family-owned civil construction companies in California, if not the United States. They took out a mile of asphalt, used it for the project that they're doing down the road. Now we're going to make a five-foot-wide trail to increase the coastal trail, and it's been -- our office has been working with the North Coast -- with the Eureka Office of the Coastal Commission, and we've just come up with some really good solutions. Increase of coastal trail, we're working with tribes for restoration. We're working with the Westport Village Society. They purchased property just south of there, so we're increasing it. I just want to say it's just good government-to-government work, and thank you. And if you would, please extend your thanks to the North Coast Office, which has been just a tremendous asset to working holistically in the coastal zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Seek, Anna Newman, and then we'll move to our Zoom speakers.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Seek. I would like to introduce the commission to the Headlands Environmental Remediation Education Project, or Project Here for short. We were awarded a technical assistance grant from the Department of Toxic Substance Control earlier this year. The purpose of the project is to engage the community, engage in community education focusing on the condition of the former Georgia Pacific Mill Site and the remaining environmental issues. Most of the funding we received is being used to hire a technical consultant, Stephanie Aguilar of Fairlong Consulting, to review and explain existing investigation and cleanup reports to the public. The remaining remediation is currently under discussion by the landowner and various agencies, including DTSC, the city, the Coastal Commission, and the Department of Safety of Dams. Public participation in these discussions is an essential component of the process, and the public can most meaningfully participate when fully informed about the condition of the areas still needing remediation and the alternatives being proposed. For more information about this project, we invite you to visit our website, project-hear.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Newman. I'm the harbor master for the Neio Harbor District. If you haven't had an opportunity to go to our harbor, I strongly suggest it. Neio Harbor is located on Neio River, so we're rather split into two. North Harbor is along the northern side of the river channel, where the majority of our fish buyers, processors, and then great local restaurants are. On the southern side of the river is the marina, which is primarily where I work. Within the marina, we have over 100 commercial-active fishermen who will make anywhere between $7 to $14 million annually, depending on season availability. So this last year, we made about $7 million, and that was largely due to the fact that the California king salmon season has been closed for the last three years. Although our fleet has faced significant challenges, as the harbor district, we're working as hard as we can to be a strong backbone for the commercial fishing fleet. Right now, we're constructing a new 20-ton flake ice machine for the fishermen, and we're hoping to offer ice at half the cost of what ice had been previously offered at, from $250 a ton to $100 a ton, hopefully. Need to see my PG&E bills first. Aside from that, that grant was awarded through the California Jobs First Program through the Economic Development Department. We were very excited to be awarded another grant for the planning and permitting of the redevelopment of the marina from the State Coastal Conservancy. Our harbor was built in the 1960s, so we are wood and steel brackets. As we know, over time, that's degraded, and we're hoping to transition into concrete. That's also going to give us an amazing opportunity to update our infrastructure for this larger fleet that we're seeing. Although we have a lot of successes, we have a lot of challenges still ahead of us. We're in desperate need of dredging, and our dredge spoils location is in severe need of redevelopment and some love. Thank you, guys, so much for coming. Please come down to the harbor if you have an opportunity. Please feel free to reach out to me for any questions about marinas, redevelopment, or ice manufacturing. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Zoom speakers. We have first Samantha McDonald, followed by Adam Leverens, Susan Simon, and Ernie Simon. Samantha McDonald, give us a second as you're being promoted and as a panelist. And then when you're able to, please go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Sam McDonald, Livermore, Newport Beach. The SLC just published their draft report that shows Newport Beach, to no one's surprise, is discriminating and potentially violating the California Constitution and Granite Land Statute. However, during the SLC's recent meeting, Chair Kolonakis asked the SLC chief counsel why Livermore boards are not being addressed in their investigation, despite clear signals that the city intends to eradicate the Livermore community. SLC chief counsel responded to that. Due to an informal opinion provided by the Attorney General for a House vote case in Redwood City back in 2015, they do not believe Livermore boards are aligned with public trust. The state lands commission opinion, in my confidence, is wrong. I'm not a lawyer, but I do have a PhD studying civic technology and engagement, and I feel confident in my general interpretation of legal and policy-based evidence. And I wrote a detailed letter to the SLC citing the laws and historical decisions by the state, which contradict the SLC's council's claims, including previous decisions directly made by the SLC to approve Livermore boards in places like Berkeley. I am urging and honestly begging at this point you to read the letter and to understand why the SLC and CCC must intervene and stop the eradication of Livermore boards. Newport is drastically changing coastal access and trying to circumvent the CDP process. It is time for the Coastal Commission to step up and require the CDP due to a substantial change in the harbor. Not only is a license conversion program going to eradicate a form of coastal and affordable housing, potentially against no-net loss provisions and against the stated priorities of this commission, it's going to drastically change recreational access in the Thailands and oceans for all. Please require a CDP be filed. Thank you.
Thank you. And next will be John Gallo, who showed up in person, and then we'll move on to Adam Leverens, Susan Simon, and Ernie Simon.
Yeah, thank you, Commission, for coming to Fort Bragg. And I was outside on Zoom when those five people weren't there in front of me, so couldn't get in fast enough. All right, so I am the chairman of the Fort Bragg Headlands Consortium. We were formed in 2017, and we have three social goals. The one that I really want to focus on today is our goal of sustainable growth with a local economy that sustains itself and the environment. And I woke up last night, middle of the night, just torn by everything that had happened yesterday and over the last 20 years, and not seeing a solution, not seeing a win-win. And I was thinking, how are we going to meet our goals as an organization, also the goals of Sierra Railroad Company shareholders? Because like it or not, that's what's on the table. And then those are the goals of the Fort Bragg City and also the Coastal Commission. And then about two hours later, it hit me like a ton of bricks. I'm so excited. And so I've got a win-win-win solution that is going to work, and I have two asks of you guys. Ask number one is do not sign the MOU until after I've had a chance to share this vision with the railway, with the city, with you, and the community. I really think this is going to be the solution. Number two, I mean, a part of that is this solution is significantly different than what's on the table, and it's a win for the railroad. But it is so different that it could arguably be considered a breach of the MOU if we discuss it after the MOU is signed. So that's why we need a little time here. The second ask is that for those of you that see the potential of Fort Bragg to be a gem of the California coast and a world-class city, please share your experience and your statewide perspective with us, the railroad, the new city staff, the new city council members, the new mayor, vice mayor. And see you guys tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Adam Leverens, Susan Simon, Ernie Simon, and then Jennifer Creston. Adam Leverens.
Is my audio coming in?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, and good morning to all. Again, speaking-- Again, speaking about coastal access through the use of moorings in Newport Beach, which moorings are the lowest-tier form of coastal boating access. I've got a couple slides if it could be called up. A 40-foot mooring permit, they were developed, installed, and refined by permit holders over near 100 years and in compliance with city and federal mandates. They're maintained by the permit holders, and they actualize the local coastal program, coastal land-use plan goal, to preserve moorings as a form of low-cost access to the water. The city desires a 100% conversion of what they call city-owned, short-term licenses. The rents for these are $7,200 a year, as opposed to the mooring permit, which is about $1,600 a year. Those rates are more than 1,300% higher than current state benchmark rates for Orange County. The maintenance expense is borne by the city, and the city really can't do anything cost-effectively. And it transitions coastal access to be more localized to the affluent through prohibitive pricing and regulation. If you could go to my next slide, please. So in summary, city-owned, short-term, high-cost mooring licenses price out the less affluent and out-of-counters who can often not afford to own or even rent in Newport Beach. Further reduce coastal access, tailoring it even more to socioeconomic privilege and locals-only, have rates more than 1,300% higher than current benchmarks. There are also multiples higher than the other four categories you see at the bottom. I hope you will look at those later. Next slide, please. State Lands addressed this at their August 21st meeting. The lieutenant governor sitting as the chair said, quote, "This commission does not set rates for the peers. This is not our call. This is the city's call," close quote. So this is in coastal's realm of authority. There's been some speculation over the year and a half, who does this? Top of the page, memo from Peter Douglas, saying that you have control over rates. And bottom of the page, a public resource code identifying that moorings are a development by your own regulations. It is time for coastal to step up and have a CDP process issued for the city's intent to take these moorings away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Susan Simon, Ernie Simon, Jennifer Creston. Susan Simon, go ahead.
Good morning, Coastal Commissioners. My name is Susan Simon, and I am co-chair of the Embarcadero Coalition. I would like to share concerns we have regarding the Port of San Diego's Port Master Plan Update, specifically the myriad of ways that Port Master Plan Update is inconsistent with Coastal Act Chapter III codes. Regarding Article VII, Industrial Development, Code Zero, excuse me, Code 30260 Alpha, the PMPU's omissions and lack of candor with the public and the Coastal Commission did not allow for the proper evaluation of large-scale development in the central Embarcadero. The PMPU states nothing will change in the CE, but the port identified a developer in 2016 to redo the entirety of the central Embarcadero. They had a detailed project description as early as 2019 and commenced SEQA analysis in 2020. The port approved the PMPU in 2024, so why wasn't this development included in the SEQA analysis? The Seaport Project, as it is called, looks to relocate the fish processing plant and fish-offloading piers and docks on the only remaining water view on the G Street Mall, a promontory. Based upon comments fishing industry representatives provided at many of the port meetings, they don't appear to think this relocation is workable for them due to the amount of square footage they require, the volume of traffic, and the lack of adequate parking if they are co-located with a busy restaurant at the same site. Without the redevelopment in the central Embarcadero, the PMPU EIR stated traffic was significant and unavoidable. The project will only make it worse, causing pollution so near the water. Code 30250 Alpha. The above also makes this plan inconsistent with this code section that says industrial development should not have significant adverse effects, either individually or cumulatively, on coastal resources. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter.
Thank you. And I believe Ernie Simon is sharing a device.
Yes.
Good morning, Coastal Commissioners. My name is Ernie Simon, and I'm a member of the Embarcadero Coalition. I would like to share concerns we have regarding the Port of San Diego's Port Master Plan Update, specifically the myriad of ways the PMPU is inconsistent with the Coastal Act Chapter III codes. Regarding Article IV, Marine Environment, Code 30230, marine resources will not be maintained, enhanced, or restored by building new piers that will induce more mega yachts and increase other boat traffic, people, and their associated litter, and replace passive green spaces with wider concrete walkways in this relatively small area. Besides the trash in the water and constant sediment disturbance caused by boat traffic, development of additional piers and buildings at or very near the water will cause shading on the water, disturbing or destroying habitat. Regarding Code 30234, proposed recreational boating facilities shall, where feasible, be designed and located in such a fashion as to not interfere with the needs of the commercial fishing industry. The increase in the number of berths, including mega yachts, in the areas nearest the commercial fishing fleet and in the narrowest portion of the bay can't but interfere with the commercial fishing industry. It already does at current levels, not to mention the commercial shipping industry and the U.S. Navy, who routinely must sound their horns to get boats, jet skis, and other watercraft out of their path. I appreciate your time and attention to this important matter. Good day.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Creston, followed by Heine Austin, and then Chailey Hilkema. Jennifer Creston.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a video, I believe, that I'd like you to show, but I just want you to know that the issues in San Diego presented by Mr. Conway are the same in Newport Beach. And after a meeting last night with the Newport Beach Harbor Commission regarding mooring-permit concerns, we were informed that the Harbor Commission is, no longer has any authority over the issues that we presented, and that now the Newport Beach City Council is in charge. So please play my video. Can you hear that?
We're going to start it from the beginning again. Just give a team a second.
Okay. Here's what this is. And nobody, nobody, in that story, they're not going to tell you what it is. Don't tell you what it is. It's rich people who own beach houses don't want poor people there. Yeah. That's what's going on. Rich people are great about raising money for poor people, but they don't want them on their ship.
Thank you.
So if you're in that area, keep going to the beach. It irritates the rich.
Thank you.
So keep buzzing at the beach, and it's irritating the rich people who think they...
All right. Next will be Heine Austin, followed by Chailey Hilkema, Jennifer Ortega. Heine Austin, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Can you enlarge my slide, please? Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Heine Austin. Despite decades of successful implementation, the Coastal Act's vision to, of coastal protection and equal access for all people is not fully realized. Systematic socioeconomic discrimination in Newport Beach prevents moorings from having equal access with affluent dock owners to the California coast. The Coastal Act defines environmental justice as the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of people of all races, cultures, incomes, and national origins with respect to the development of policies, the meaningful consideration of recommendations from populations and communities most impacted by land-use decisions. This satellite image shows two identical uses of Thailand waters in Newport Beach. Both are recreational, self-installed, self-maintained, long-term storage. Notation A shows a dock that pays $600 a year and can park seven boats free of charge. According to a map online calculator, the highlighted area of the dock and the boats cover 5,400 square feet. That dock pays 11 cents per square foot per year. Notation B, at the white dot next door, shows an 18-foot onshore mooring that occupies 190 square feet. In 2024, the city launched a new mooring license program that raises mooring rates by 500% with no public input. The mooring must pay $1,600 a year or $8 a square foot. Docks are multi-use spaces and easy to access. Moorings are single-use spaces and difficult to access, yet moorings must pay 70 times more. Finally, with the mooring, with moorings as the, mooring community as being the most impacted community, we hereby request that you direct the city to apply for CDP to convert low-cost moorings into permits into high-cost mooring licenses and raise mooring rates by 500%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Chailey Hilkema, Jennifer Ortega, and then Lucy Rennick.
Hello. Thank you, Coastal Commissioner Harmon and Coastal Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We could, you muted yourself.
Unmute.
There, there, now we can hear you.
Am I good? Thank you so much, and thank you for your good work. My name is Chailey Hilkema. My husband George and I are mooring-permit holders in Newport Harbor. George has been a board member of the Newport Mooring Association for 35 years. The city of Newport Beach has regulated discrimination against mooring-permit holders, and the inequities go way beyond the nine pages of Harbor Code mooring regulations compared with the one page regulating those with mooring, oh, excuse me, with residential pier permits. It has relentlessly changed policy that affects us negatively, and now it wants to raise our Thailand fees 300 to 500% and end the long-established practice of mooring transferability. Moorings were intended to be a lower-cost alternative to boats' lips, but more privileged people with residential pier permits pay a fraction of our fees for their docks and nothing for the boats tied to them. And the city allows them to rent dock space, giving them a regulated opportunity to profit from their private use of the public tidelands. The Beacon Bay Bill requires that the city makes no discrimination in rates for any use. Since all boats in the harbor are moored on public tidelands, either at a commercial dock, a private dock, or a mooring buoy, we ask that the city charge all users equitable fees. We've had an ongoing struggle to protect mooring transferability. Many of us paid tens of thousands of dollars for our permit. The city and county participated in this process. There was no standardized permit fee. The waitlist was ineffective. People were on it for decades and never got a mooring. If someone finally did get one, it may not have been in a convenient location. So the market solved issues related to place and time, and for those of us who wanted to sail while we were still able to do so, purchasing a mooring permit was the only option. If the city is allowed to take away our ability to transfer our moorings, it will be singling us out, given that it has always and will always allow transferability of permits for homeowner docks and marinas. This discrimination will substantially hurt us in our retirement. We won't be able to recoup some of what we've paid, and if mooring rates are raised to amounts that are unaffordable for most, it will be difficult to sell our boat. That story will be told 1,000 times. The city has hit it with a one-two punch. It was probably meant to knock the wind out of our sails and us out of the harbor, but we've decided to fight back, and thank you for helping us with our fight.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Next is Jennifer Ortega, followed by Lucy Rennick and then Janet Rogers. Jennifer Ortega.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Ortega. I'm the education manager with Friends of the Dunes located in Humboldt County. Friends of the Dunes is a nonprofit dedicated to conserving the natural diversity of coastal environments in Northern California through community-supported education and stewardship programs. We want to say thank you for the funding we have received through the Whale Tail Grant, and I'd like to share some highlights. This year, Friends of the Dunes coordinated our 20th Kids Ocean Day event in Humboldt County on May 29th. This is a free field trip. 603 students attended Kids Ocean Day. In addition to students, approximately 178 adults attended the event, as staff, volunteers, teachers, and parent chaperones. We were able to pay for one bus per school. 12 schools participated. For 132 of those students, it was their first time going to the ocean. Additionally, we were able to coordinate 25 coastal field trips for elementary students. 21 schools participated, with a total of 810 students learning about coastal environments. We were rewarded approximately, we awarded approximately $3,500 in bus scholarships to schools based on need. We recruited and provided thorough environmental education training for 23 volunteer field trip guides. We were able to offer several scholarships for our California Naturalist Course. So thank you. Thank you for your grant funding support.
Thank you. Next is Lucy Rennick, Janet Rogers, and then Carol Archibald. Lucy Rennick.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Rennick. I'm a policy intern for Better Neighbors L.A., a coalition of hosts, tenants, housing advocates, and community members. We conduct data analysis and research on the short-term rental industry, including in the coastal zone, where we advocate for regulating short-term rentals through true home sharing and hosted-only rentals to balance coastal access and long-term housing needs. Today, we want to let the Commission know that California's Department of Housing and Community Development published their plan to modify the regional housing needs allocation determination process, so that local jurisdictions must account for units lost to short-term rentals and vacation homes and their RENA calculations. Municipalities are concerned that short-term rentals could severely reduce already-limited housing stock. Last month, the Coastal Commission considered an LCPA from such a community. When it approved without amendment, the county of Monterey's LCPA regulating short-term rentals. Better Neighbors applauds the Commission's decision to approve the LCPA. The Commission should continue to permit municipalities to limit STRs to address their housing needs, especially when STRs often do not provide low-cost overnight accommodations. It is likely that local coastal jurisdictions will continue to take housing into account in their short-term rental policies due to changes in RENA policy. The new RENA policy will apply to the seventh cycle of the housing element and continue moving forward. We appreciate the Commission's thoughtful engagement on Monterey County's LCPA and urge you to continue thinking critically and holistically about community needs as you evaluate further STR regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Rogers, Carol Archibald, and then Robert Roy Van de Hook. Janet Rogers.
Good morning. I'm Janet Rogers, co-chair of the Embarcadero Coalition. San Diego's port refused to change the Port Master Plan Update to mitigate significant and unavoidable EIR impacts due to making money. We suffer when environmental impacts aren't fixed. Will your environmental analysis require the port to fix the environmental impacts, or is an environmental analysis just a joke? Next slide. In July, I listed EIR categories that were significant and unavoidable after mitigation. Will you harm all these sensitive receptors? Why would you certify this PMPU? Next slide. The port used overriding, next, yeah. The port used overriding considerations to certify the PMPU, but it's all about money. They praise sustainable revenues, economic generators, economic growth, private sector participation, and economic sustainability. Next slide. The port increases revenue from tourism taxes and hotels, but only three Californians of every 100 visitors stay at downtown hotels. The massive Embarcadero hotel development is not for Californians. Next slide. The port voted that significant unavoidable environmental impacts are outweighed by the benefits, and the adverse environmental effects are considered acceptable. Why are they acceptable to the Commission? Next slide. The port's 2024 negative income was $95 million. The port can't justify ruining the Embarcadero for money. Next slide. The impacts are only unavoidable if the port stays on the same course, change direction. The impacts are only unavoidable if the port stays on the same course, change direction. Please stop the port monetizing the Embarcadero regardless of the negative environmental impacts. Please save the public tideland for Californians. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Archibald, followed by Robert Roy Van de Hook, and then Michael Brandon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Could you put up my slides, please?
The slides are up.
Okay. I'm Carol Archibald from the Sierra Clats Seal Society. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for all you do. Next slide. The city made a commitment in April to have rangers staffed at Point La Jolla to monitor the cove and make announcements on a bullhorn and to create an incident report sent to NOAA enforcement. In August, we showed the Commissioners a report with very few announcements made in June and July. In August, there were also less than two per day. Andy Field, Park and Recreation Director, made a presentation to the Commissioners in August committing to hire a ranger for the cove. While commendable, this could take time. Next slide. What we need is short-term actions implemented now. Require rangers already staffed at Point La Jolla to monitor the cove at defined intervals every 30 minutes. For public safety, ask the city to place signage on the beach informing people to stay at safe distances. The photo to your right shows an A-frame sign with sea lion in the background at Pismo Beach. Place cones and tape around sea lion pups, injured sea lions, and difficult-to-see sea lions. This happens in all other areas along the coast. Why not in La Jolla? Next slide, please. Again, these are short-term actions that can be implemented now. Ask the city to temporarily close the western stairs when sea lions are resting on them to prevent people from descending the stairs and not seeing the animals until they are almost stepping on them. Access on the eastern stairs keeps the beach open at all times. The photo to your right shows tourists on the stairs with sea lions within feet away. These actions are not difficult to implement and will improve public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robert Roy Van de Hook, Michael Brandon, and Judy Taylor. Robert Roy Van de Hook.
Thank you. Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Robert Jan Van de Hook, nicknamed Roy, and I am a conservation biologist and environmental scientist, and I'm with the Biona Institute, and I cooperate with Protect Biona Wetlands and Defend Biona Wetlands. I titled my speech today "It's Not Fair to the Public," but was fair 25 years ago with Pedro Nava as a commissioner and Senator Burton at the Coastal Commission. 25 years ago, approximately, Pedro Nava was appointed to the Postal Commission. He called it the Postal Commission because he understood later, after he got the position, it was the Coastal Commission. It rhymes a little bit of poetry there. After a time on the Coastal Commission, appointed by the Assembly Speaker, he was removed or turned out and not going to get reappointed. He went to Senator Burton, who then he put, he was Senator Rotem, and he put Pedro Nava back on the Commission. He was in the era of courage and giving the public the time to speak. Him and Rusty Reyes, the Chair of the Commission, would give the public five minutes to speak, and if they were with an organization, a little more time. Now it went down to three minutes, and now two minutes, and sometimes we're only getting one minute to speak now. And that's why it's my title, "It's Not Fair." But another method that Pedro Nava used to have more time for the public was an example of when I was a scientist, and he called me back up to the podium to give the names of, the scientific names of plants and animals in the Biona wetlands and put it onto the record. It's very important to do that. The Native American people have an issue on the California condor, and Pedro Nava played a role on that, and the condor is coming back to coastal Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Brandon, Judy Taylor, and Jim Palmer. Michael Brandon.
Good morning, staff, Commissioners, and esteemed Chair Harmon. I humbly ask you to enforce oversight into Newport Beach's efforts to drastically change mooring permits by requiring the city to apply for a coastal development plan. If you recall, Newport Beach's recent attempt to condense a mooring field through a CDP was rejected by your council 9 to 1 for failing to consider the most basic safety protocols and severely failing to engage with its stakeholders. Now, with respect to mooring permits, all efforts to reason with, initiate dialogue, and propose compromise with the city of Newport Beach have failed. State Lands has given us audience and discovered inequities in Newport Beach's conduct, but it seems that their internal compass is divided between protecting public access and stepping aside to give the city of Newport Beach autonomy to manage the tidelands. It is now abundantly clear to me that this commission holds the most power to rein in the city of Newport Beach by forcing them to apply for a coastal development permit to change the structure of their mooring permit program because their July 9, 2024 ordinance violates their current coastal land use plan and will force tideland users out of the harbor, reducing access to affordable boating. And with that, I see the rest of my time. Thank you so much for listening to this cause.
Thank you. Next is Judy Taylor, Jim Palmer, and then Patricia McPherson. Judy Taylor.
Good morning. This is Judy Taylor, and I am here today on behalf of SmartCoast California. SmartCoast California is an organization that is promoting safe and sane use of our beaches and land use policies. We have a summit coming up on October 16th. This is normally, the last three summits we have done have been in-person, and the Coastal Commission staff has participated. We had your director speaking at a couple of the meetings. I'm not very fluent this morning, I'm sorry. But please check out smartcoastca.org. Our summit is on the 16th from 9 until 4. Your executive director will be presenting again. Dr. Charles Lester will also be one of the presenters. And check us out at smartcoastca.org. You will see the, it is being done virtually this year because we want to get to a wider audience. So check us out. We have an early registration until the 17th of this month, and we'd like to see lots and lots and lots of your faces on our Zoom screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Palmer. It seems that we're having trouble finding a mic. Okay, there, now I see a mic connected. You should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, now we can hear you. Go ahead.
I had a little delay going there. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for what you do. I'm here to also request that the Coastal Commission require the city of Newport Beach to obtain a CDP for its July 9, 2024 approved, yet temporarily suspended ordinance to mooring permits to mooring licenses in Newport Harbor. This policy change constitutes development on the coastal act and significantly impacts public access because a increasing cost and limiting access to tidelands for lower-income voters while favoring Newport Beach residents. Side note is 60% of mooring permit holders are not Newport Beach residents and therefore do not have local elected representation. B, structural change. Mooring gear has been owned and maintained by permies for over 100 years over their permit. Mooring licenses structurally change mooring gear to be owned and operated by the city without a CDP. C, the State Lands Commission's draft review states that tideland administration grant gives a city wide latitude and implies that development changes are not within the city's SLC's grant review authority. Many view that response that the SLC is punting the development issue of permits to license conversion back to the CCC for CDP. This commission noted in denying the mooring reconfiguration in February of this year, the lack of adequate community engagement was a major reason the CDP denial. That lack of adequate engagement continues, as just last night, and once again. The Harbor Commission held what was expected to be a return to past commission practices of collaboration. Instead, our current work, quote, "taking under advisement," unquote, only to be followed by another round of demeaning lectures from Harbor Commissioners about how their, quote, "objectives to modify moorings," unquote, are approved by the city council and what other tideland permits are not their problem as they're maintained by the Public Works Department, not the Harbor Commission. I urge you, it's now time to intervene, please, sooner rather than later, and instruct staff to require the CDP to convert permits to licenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia McPherson, followed by Jim Fitzgerald, Susie Whitelaw, and Ann Cantrell. Patricia McPherson.
Patricia McPherson, Grassroots Coalition, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Grassroots Coalition has been instrumental in protecting Biona wetlands for the past 20 years. We led to a willing seller. I'm also a founding member of Biona Lagoon Marine Preserve and instrumental in the city of Los Angeles's creation of the Playa Vista Methane Prevention Detection and Monitoring Program for Playa Vista Phase 1, as well as the citywide methane code. So we have substantial background in that. My issue this morning regarding is the California Coastal Commission has continually ceded their responsibility over to Caljam with regard to underground oilfield gas migration and SoCal Gas's operations within the coastal area here. We have Section 30231 protection against petroleum product hazards, and that 30232 that the commission has the ability to help with effective containment for any development. And I would ask that you participate in those endeavors. My experience in speaking with staff is there is little to no knowledge with regard to these oilfield issues. We currently have leaking wells that are in the Biona, the freshwater marsh area. We also have in Biona Lagoon Marine Preserve, E.G. Curtis, at the end that is leaking continually. These issues need to be addressed by the Coastal Commission, similarly, I think, to the underground or the below-water surface, that the commission is very much engaged with the Navy in stopping a lot of the ill issues that the Navy has been involved with in the marine environment. Similarly, here, I wish that the Coastal Commission would stop ceding any and all authority over to Caljam, which is an oil and gas industry-oriented entity. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Fitzgerald, Susie Whitelaw, and Ann Cantrell. Jim Fitzgerald.
Hi, sorry, I'm getting Zoom issues. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear and see you.
Yeah, I live in the neighborhood, and I just got a couple of things, but one big thing in my short two minutes. It's a tight area, and the way the new layout exists raises one concern to me that's higher is that the street hurricane pretty much dead ends, and right now you've got the old pump on one side, you're building the new pump on the other side, and it'll continue to be a public road that goes right through the middle of it. And today is 9/11, and I worry about somebody with a truck parking it in the middle and taking out the old and new pumps at the same time and causing havoc.
Excuse me, sir. This is an item on our agenda today, so you'll have to sign up and speak at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Susie Whitelaw.
Oh, I am signing up.
Ann Cantrell.
Hello. I'm Dr. Susie Whitelaw with Save Our Beaches San Clemente, where the Orange County Transportation Authority, OCTA, has railroad tracks right on our beach, and I've been talking to you for the last two years about how we want OCTA to place sand on our beach instead of riprap to protect their tracks. Well, this week, they, yay, they did start placing sand on our tracks, but unfortunately, we have issues. Next slide. And, and next slide. Go ahead and move to the next slide. The sand on the left is what is naturally on this beach, and the material on the right is what OCTA is bringing in. Now, I have a PhD in marine sedimentology, but all you need are eyes to see that those two things are not the same. Look at the small grains on the left, and then look, small grains on the right, and then look at the left picture and see if you can see those tiny grains there. They are not there. The reason why is because the wave energy is really high on this beach, and all the fine-grained material gets washed out and washed offshore. Only the larger grains get left behind. Now, the quarry where this material came from on the left, it has good quality, medium and coarse-grained sand, like on the right, but it appears that OCTA's consultant must have deliberately chosen this inappropriately fine-grained sand. Next slide, please. They're placing the sand right on the front edge of the berm where it will be the first line attack by waves. When the waves place that fine-grained sand into suspension, it will not settle back onto the beach, but it will be washed offshore. Since the purpose of this project is to expand the beach to protect their tracks, this sand will not protect the beach. It in no way mitigates the 5,000 tons of rock that they've placed on their beach. I appreciate how much time and effort coastal staff, even Dr. Hucklebridge, have given to this project, and I am just so sorry to say that all that effort and a million dollars of taxpayer money just seems to have been wasted.
Thank you. Ann Cantrell, we seem to be having trouble moving in as panelists. You should be able to unmute as an attendee now. And then the other speakers that we have signed up and weren't able to find, I'll call your names. If you are either in the Zoom meeting or in person, you may approach. Vincent Poterica, Doug Hammerstrom, Anastasia Kolmarovsk, Nick Johnson, Nico Di Toledo. And then again, Ann Cantrell, you should be able to unmute. All right, I'm seeing no movement from Ann. I'm seeing no other hands raised for people that we have signed up. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, before we go to Commissioner comments and questions, we're going to take a 10-minute bio break. I would ask all of my colleagues to please use the restroom now because we are limited by quorum requirements. Okay, that was a real one this time. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Now I'm going to return to the Commission and ask if anyone has comments or questions coming out of public comment. Commissioner Nada.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank everybody who came to speak about the tour yesterday and kind of give the other side of the story. I really appreciate you guys showing up. Thanks to our former chair. I'm going to talk about the La Jolla sea lions because that's what I'm doing here. You know, I'm sort of dismayed at the progress that has been made. I had, I think, told somebody that over the last couple of months, I've met with mayoral staff, I met with council president's staff, I've discussed with some of the city attorney's office about actions that they could and should be taking. At this point, it doesn't seem like they're following up, or at least quick enough. And so, you know, I would like to see, whether it's next month or sometime certainly before December's meeting down in San Diego, some regular updates from them, kind of, you know, whether it's monthly or however. And I think I'm prepared to make that request to the city on behalf of staff or on behalf of the Commission, if that helps. But, and I'm sure my other, some other Commissioners will have something to say, but I'm kind of embarrassed again, being from San Diego and seeing this continue to happen, and just hope that with further pressure, we can get the city to actually take action and do something, not only in the short term, long term, but short term as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nada.
Yes, thank you. And I do think, one of the things I took away from yesterday's tour was the incredible resource that's here to the west of us and what the statewide, the significant statewide interest is in that area. And so I appreciate learning more of the details. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things that we hear about regularly. First is, it's great to see that there's some progress being made in San Clemente with beach replenishment. I'm dismayed to hear if there's some problem with the materials that are being used, and I'd be interested in hearing more about the details on that. And then in terms of, it's good to see the State Lands Commission has completed their report on the Newport Basin. report on the Newport Bay situation. That's a continuing problem. I'm concerned, you know, it's good, I think they've, it sounds like they've determined that there is some action to be taken there, and I'm a little confused with some of the conflicting testimony we heard, so I'd like some clarification from staff on that and next steps. Thanks.
Through the chair. Thanks, Commissioner Nada. First, I guess, to respond to your question about the OCTA sand placement. Okay, there it is. I do believe that there was sand placement, as you saw the pictures, and did just want to, you know, call out OCTA for falling through with that commitment. It's a relatively small amount of sand, but it's a really good start. I checked in with staff during the break, and based on the sediment testing that OCTA submitted to us, the sand being placed is actually slightly coarser than what's on the beach, as opposed to more fine, which is what Ms. Whitelaw had claimed. I, we, I don't think we've seen on the, you know, post-testing or anything along those lines, so I think we need to dig in a little bit more to see if there's any merit in that. But again, we did require testing. The testing was satisfactory, so maybe there's a little bit more for us to look into there. And then on the Newport moorings issue, we have a meeting set up with State Lands staff coming up soon, and this is on that agenda, to start to understand where they are, what their process is. My understanding is they don't, there's not a commission action scheduled soon. I think that's at the end of the year, but not sure. I need to check in with State Lands and see what their plan is and get a briefing on their report.
It's a project. Welcome, Dr. Larson. This is something we look forward to working with you on.
Commissioner Nada, I just wanted to add just a little bit more that the State Lands Commission report, that's our understanding that is a draft that they published and that they're currently accepting public comments on it. They haven't officially adopted it yet, and that's what they would be coming back to the State Lands Commission toward the end of the year. So, yeah, staff is still looking at that, as well as, we understand the city is still reviewing the content of the report, and of course, we'll be following up with them as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Chair Harmon. I wanted to just reflect on some of the comments we heard this morning, as well as our tour yesterday afternoon of the property in Fort Bragg owned by Mendocino Railway, and just the, really, the getting to set foot on the site and having access and being there with members of the Fort Bragg community, as well as leadership of the Mendocino Railway. I want to give thanks for their willingness to host us yesterday, and also some of our regional partners and staff who were able to participate, and just the number of community residents who came out and who clearly are very engaged on this issue and hearing about the history of, not only the history of the site, right, which is, you know, over 100 years of discussion of what's taken place there, but really the history of the land use negotiations that have been taking place over the last several decades. And so I want to just share my concern that was, you know, raised by residents around wanting to move forward collaboratively and working, you know, on solutions, and also just to, you know, voice the, really, how vast and the presence of being there on the site and what you feel and experience when you are there. It really takes so much of what we've seen and talked about on paper and makes you understand really what an amazing resource this land is and what it means to this community, but also the interests in our state. I think there are very few, if any, places that really have that level of, you know, it's 300 acres. We're talking about miles of coastline that have been long, kind of forgotten, and the concretization, if that is a word, but really just seeing how little has been done on the site to take action on remediation in a meaningful way, and knowing what we know about sea level rise and things that are happening today, and what we know to be true of what's happening in the future. I think, you know, the thought of not taking action over the next two decades, if we're still in this kind of land use cycle doom loop of planning and replanning, I think it's not only a waste of public resources to continue circular planning efforts, but also we don't have the ability to not act at this point. I think because of what we know about the level of toxicity on the site and where the, where we now know the, you know, where DTSC has come in and evaluated and made recommendations for the toxicity, I'm concerned that if we don't really move forward with a solution, we are in fact allowing, you know, additional harm to coastal resources. And so I just, I'm eager to see all of the jurisdictions, city, Coastal Commission, Mendocino Railway, others, DTSC, to come forward with a collaborative solution, and I feel confident that we're going to be able to get there in this lifetime. So, if not sooner. And so I just want to say thank you for everyone who participated and looking forward to meaningful conversations and advancing our shared goals and values in this community.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all the speakers. Thank you to everyone who participated in yesterday's tour. It was illuminating, and I think we all walked away with the same thought that this definitely presents a tremendous opportunity for the city of Fort Bragg. I want to turn my attention to, real quickly, just a comment on the Newport mooring concerns that I've been hearing about, or we've been hearing about since I came on in May. And State Lands Commission, as you mentioned, just met, and the one comment they made is consistent with some of the comments we've made, that they've been concerned about the sale and transferability of public state tidelands. And I just did a quick Google search, and there are moorings for sale from $20,000 all the way up into the high six figures. So they are certainly concerned with that profiting from state tidelands. I also just wanted to align myself with Commissioner O'Malley on the sea lion issue in La Jolla. And again, I'm just flummoxed, flabbergasted. I just did a quick Google search of, I just said, beach, sea lions close beaches. I came up with five. Santa Carla's closed their beaches due to a large colony of sea lions, Monterey Beach, Sister City Park, and there were a couple more. And then, what also popped up was the fact that there was a man witnessed just a day ago, a day or two ago, taunting a beach, excuse me, taunting a seal at La Jolla. He was actually filmed trying to touch the seal who was sleeping, and the seal woke up. And the city of San Diego, in response, I saw they posted something that said, "Don't be this guy." Well, that's it. And that seems to be all we've gotten, is that type of, you know, social media postings and promises of action, when, again, I'm a simple-minded guy. It's not that hard to put a piece of yellow tape across the bottom of the stairs and close it and put up a sign. So I look forward to your additional involvement in trying to get some action. Again, you know, I've been here since May, and every single month I've been hearing about moorings and the sea lions. The moorings at least is being addressed. The sea lions, I think, is just a, you know, and I understand the sea lions are cool to see, they're cool to witness, but you can witness them from the top of the stairs without going down and exposing the pups to danger, as well as yourself. I mean, they are wild animals. And, you know, God forbid something happens. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none. I don't think, I'm assuming our colleagues online don't have their hands raised. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Perfect. Okay, so now, thank you very much to the public for being here and sharing your testimony. It's always hugely important for us and very much valued by this commission to get your input. So, thank you. So, we'll move on now to the regular consent calendar, please. Turn it back to staff. Mr. Hudson.
Thank you. And the next item is item five, the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. We have three items on consent, and staff was not aware of any opposition to these items at the time the staff reports were prepared, and the applicants are in agreement with the staff's recommendations. Thus, staff is recommending the commission vote and approve the consent calendar. Staff is available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have any expertises to report on any of these items? Okay. Seeing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on any items on the consent calendar?
We have no public comment, but we do have three people available for questions.
Okay. Does anyone want to remove any of these items? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Kelly, seconded by Commissioner O'Malley. And I think we have to do a roll call vote again today, so turn it to you, Ms. Miller. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nada?
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado?
Yes.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Abstain.
Turnbull Sanders abstains. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
With one abstention, I believe.
With one abstention.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The consent calendar is adopted, and now we will move to those items that have been removed from the regular calendar to consent.
Thank you. That brings us to item six, the applications moving from regular to consent for all districts on the agenda today. As mentioned during the agenda changes earlier this morning, we have six items that staff is recommending we move to consent, and those are: Item 8B, the County of Santa Barbara LCP Amendment Time Extension for Senate Bill Nine and ADU ordinances; Item 8C, the County of Santa Barbara LCP Amendment dealing with cannabis odor regulations; Item 8D, the County of Santa Barbara LCP Amendment, de minimis amendment for telecommunication facilities ordinances; Item 18A, the City of San Diego LCP Amendment dealing with the Encanto neighborhood; Item 18B, the City of San Diego LCP Amendment dealing with cannabis outlet hours; and Item 19A, CDP, the hall CDP application. In closing, staff is not aware of any opposition to these items, and we're recommending that the commission vote and approve this item. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. Do, are there any expertises to report on these items? Okay, seeing none. How about public comments on any of these items, Chris?
I guess we have one speaker signed up for item 8D, Ann Cantrell. And, Ann Cantrell, you should be able to unmute.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm urging you to deny the proposed amendments in these items. These amendments for 5G towers are eliminating several current restrictions, including submitting a development plan to the CCC Director for Tier Two Projects. This will allow towers to be put in any zone, including residential, excepting only recreational. Towers will be allowed to exceed 50 feet and be as tall as 75 feet. There would be only a 300-foot buffer when the American Cancer Society states, quote, "There is no safe distance from a cell tower because radiation intensity depends on many factors." But some experts suggest a precautionary distance of at least a quarter mile, 1,320 feet, to limit exposure. A 2010 study before 5G found significantly higher health risks within 400 meters, about a quarter of a mile of towers, and a 500-meter buffer is recommended to minimize potential health effects, unquote. The World Health Association Organization found the radio frequency emissions a, quote, "possible human carcinogen," unquote, in addition to being connected with autism, ADA, ADHD, chronic fatigue syndrome, syndrome, and other health problems. A 2014 Department of Interior letter states, quote, "There is growing evidence linking the effects of electromagnetic radiation from communication towers on nesting and roosting wild birds, bees, and other wildlife," unquote. You commissioners have the opportunity to make cell towers a tad safer by denying these amendments, which were put in place to protect coastal resources. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other speakers, just those across all items available for questions.
Great. Thank you. I'll turn back to our staff to see if they have any comments or responses they'd like to make.
Yes, thank you. Just a brief response. So, this de minimis amendment has very few changes to any development standard. It is really just streamlining the permit process. That's its purpose. It eliminates the need for a specific County of Santa Barbara permit called a development permit, but it has not changed the requirement to still obtain a coastal development permit. It does contain some minor development standard changes, including some, any zoning standards. So I would just note that we don't believe that this, this amendment, and we are, the commission, there are certain federal preemptions that don't allow us to regulate 5G versus 4G, but in terms of coastal resource impacts, we of course do have that authority. And we don't believe that this amendment would result in any new adverse impacts to coastal resources from any telecommunication facility. So we do recommend that this item be approved today.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Hudson. Do any commissioners wish to remove an item from consent? No? Okay, then I will entertain comments, questions, or a motion on the balance of these items.
I move to approve the balance of items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner O'Malley. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nada?
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado?
Yes.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. The consent calendar is adopted. Now we'll move to the deputy director's report for the South Central Coast District, please.
Thank you. That brings us to item seven, the deputy director's report for South Central Coast. It includes one immaterial amendment, two permit extensions, and one objection to a previously reported time extension this month. The objection to a previously reported time extension was received for an immaterial time extension request. That was CDP application four dash 13 dash 0401 dash E11, the Van Dale application, which was reported at our last meeting in August. The project is for a single-family residence in the Santa Monica Mountains area of LA County. Because that objection was received within our 10-day period for public comment after the deputy director's report was published, a memorandum addressing the objection is included in this month's deputy director's report. And staff would note that since the original objection was received, neighboring property owner has since withdrawn their objection in writing and notified the commission that they were able to resolve their issues with the applicant to their satisfaction. Thus, for the reasons explained in the memo, there are no changed circumstances affecting the project, and with the withdrawal of that one objection, the time extension now becomes effective. Staff is not aware of any opposition to the other items being reported today, and so we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the deputy director's report. I am available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Are there any expertises? None? Okay, any speakers on the deputy director's report?
There are no speakers.
Great. Thank you. Do three or more commissioners object to any item in the deputy director's report? Okay, seeing no objections, then the commission concurs. Thank you. And that brings us, it looks like, to the deputy director's report for the South Coast District, please.
Thank you. And that is item 11, the deputy director's report. And that is item 11, the deputy director's report for South Coast, including five waivers, one immaterial amendment, and two time extensions this month. Staff received an objection from a member of the public in regard to the immaterial permit being reported today, and that's CDP 5-20-0540-A1. That's the LA County application for continuation of a previously approved five-year program for temporary seasonal sandberms protecting existing structures such as public restrooms and other facilities. Because the objection to the immaterial amendment was received within the 10-day period for public comment after our report was published, this item will be brought back at a future hearing, likely next month in October, for action by the commission with additional information to address the issues raised. In addition, staff received a letter from Leslie Purcell, who I see has signed up to speak today in regard to the two immaterial permit extensions being reported. Those are CDP extension applications 519-0983 and 0984, and that's by the applicant named NXT2 Shutters Propco LLC. That project was for two mixed-use structures in Santa Monica, and it wasn't clear from Ms. Purcell's letter if she was objecting to the extension. Our staff did respond to her email, however, we did not hear back. So I would recommend that we hear Ms. Purcell's concerns today so that staff may respond to her and any of her remaining concerns. We're not aware of any opposition to any of the other items being reported, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the deputy director's report. Staff will be available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will move, sorry, are there any ex parte's? Can't remember if I asked. No. Okay, we'll move then to the public speakers, please. Thank you.
All right, so we do have two people signed up, Kenya Lee and Leslie Purcell. As Leslie, we are trying to get her the Zoom link, so we are going to take Kenya Lee first. And then Kenya, you should be able to be moved in as a panelist.
Madam Chair, one quick clarification, is this 12A?
No, this is item 11.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And then Kenya, you should be able to unmute and begin.
Hello, are you able to load the materials that were sent for the presentation?
Can I just clarify, are you speaking about 12A or item 11?
It ranges from 12A.
So that's the next item on the agenda, so we'll bring you back to the meeting for the next item. This is on the deputy director's report that we're on right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I would also note that we don't seem to have a presentation for Kenya Lee either for this item or the next.
It was provided via email with Beverly Palmer. It was emailed over today. She had interaction with someone at staff there. It is actually, this is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would recommend that we take this conversation offline maybe, and we can continue with item 11, get through speakers, and then maybe we can reach out to Ms. Lee and try to work through the issue.
I apologize.
No, no, it's okay, ma'am. It's fine. We'll try to make sure we can find your presentation.
No, it is item 11. I'm just looking, it is item 11. I'm sorry.
Okay, why don't we take the other speaker first while we see if we can locate your presentation for item 11? Does that work, Chris?
And then Leslie Purcell has just popped into the meeting. You're being moved over. When you're able to, please go ahead.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. Just give us a second. Appreciate it.
All right, Leslie, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay, I apologize if I have a little shaky internet connection here. But yeah, I have concerns about these two-floor underground parking, subterranean parking structures that are part of these. Oh, no. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Purcell.
Idea that we have underground parking so close to the beach, and it is especially the one on Oceanfront Walk, is, just doesn't seem to conform to the sea level rise policies and the protection of coastal resources, because there will probably have to be a pumping of water from this underground parking structure, because that's usually what we've learned has happened in other parts of LA. So that has another effect on the local environment, and I know there were some studies done, but it seemed like one of them was from 2016, which is almost 10 years ago, and I think that it is just not wise to permit underground parking structures right along the coast where it will be subject to some kind of impact from sea level rise and possible liquefaction or other effects if they have to do groundwater pumping to keep the structure dry. And I wish there was some way the commission could understand that this is a significant impact that maybe wasn't quite fully comprehended at the time the permits were given. The one on Ocean Avenue is a little bit inland, but I think there still would be some problems and have some of the pumping. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think we've confirmed with Kenya Lee that she wishes to speak on item 12A, or 12A, the joint.
Great, thank you very much, Chris. Okay, I'll return to staff. Mr. Hudson, do you have any closing remarks?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to just take the opportunity to respond to Ms. Purcell's concerns and assure Ms. Purcell and the commission that that issue was fully addressed at great length in the original staff report and the commission's findings. And this site did consist of two separate structures. One was about a block inland, the other was on the beach on Oceanfront Walk in Santa Monica. The subterranean basement or parking garage that was mentioned has a few extenuating circumstances that set it apart. And the commission, in the past, we have recommended that we not approve subterranean structures on the beach. This project is not an exception to that. There is no significant subterranean parking garage below the grade of the beach. What's happening here is that there is a great differential between the beach and the first public road, and so that's where the subterranean parking garage is located. It's really in that area above the grade of the beach, but below the grade of the first public road. And so this project actually daylights at Oceanfront Walk on the beach. And the analysis in the staff report went to great lengths to note that this project over its expected life is not expected to be subject to wave-up rush even relative to sea level rise. And we, the project has been designed to avoid flooding. There are some components of the project, primarily mechanical equipment, elevator, that did extend below the grade of the beach. And so we had substantial waterproofing requirements that were determined feasible from an engineering and geologic perspective that addressed that. And because, or even though we did not expect the project to ever be subject to wave-up rush during its expected life, we of course could not rule that out as a possibility. So we had additional special conditions that addressed that, including not just an assumption of risk, also a waiver of any future shoreline protection, and the requirement that if the site ever became subject to damage from such wave action or flooding, that it be, that those components be removed. We also had, went above and beyond and had a requirement that the applicant prepare a sea level rise and flooding adaptation plan that would address many of these specific concerns as well. So I would just note that these issues were fully addressed at the time that the commission acted, and as I have reminded in similar time extension approvals in the past, these time extensions are not an opportunity to, of course, rehear the merits or concerns about the original project. The standard review is whether or not there are changed circumstances. And in this case, staff has determined there are no changed circumstances that affect this site from the commission's action just five years ago. And so we continue to recommend the commission approve this matter, this time extension, this one-year time extension today. Thank you all in my comments, but just note, staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions, or do three or more commissioners object to any item in the report? Okay, seeing no questions or objections, the commission concurs. Thank you. Okay, and now we will move on to item 12, which is a combined 12A, 12B, and 13A. Thank you.
Thank you. And there will be a combined presentation for these next three items, 12A, 12B, and 13A, which will be presented via Zoom by Jennifer Doyle, a coastal program analyst in our South Coast District. If we could first pull up the PowerPoint, please, and Jennifer, please take it away.
Good morning, commissioners. Today I'll be giving the combined presentation for items 12A, 12B, and 13A, which are for the substantial issue determination for the appeal of two CDPs approved by the City of LA and the related de novo and dual coastal development permit applications for the proposed Venice auxiliary pumping plant and the surface parking lot. The proposed auxiliary pumping plant would supplement the city's largest existing wastewater pumping facility located adjacent to the existing pumping facility. Due to increasing wet weather flows, the existing system has nearly exceeded the capacity of the existing pumps on multiple occasions. A failure during peak flows could result in sewage discharges into the Grand Canal or nearby streets. The auxiliary pumping plant is intended to reduce this risk and ensure system reliability and added capacity. Accordingly, the commission's standard of review for appeals, development in the dual permit jurisdiction area, and the commission's retained jurisdiction is the Chapter III Policies of the Coastal Act. Next slide, please. The project sites are in the Bayona Lagoon West Sub area of Venice, Los Angeles, adjacent to both the Grand Canal and Bayona Lagoon. The project involves the three city-owned vacant parcels totaling approximately 12,000 square feet and a portion under the Grand Canal. There are two side-by-side canal-fronting parcels at 3813 and 3817 Esplanade between Grand Canal to the east, the existing Venice pumping plant directly across Hurricane Street to the south, and multifamily residences north and west. These parcels would be the site for the proposed auxiliary pumping plant for the needed expansion of the existing pumping plant, as seen on this slide. The third lot located at 128, oh, same slide, please. Slide two, thank you. The third lot located at 128 Hurricane Street is shown here on this slide. It is situated across the street from the canal-fronting lots, on a lagoon-fronting parcel bounded by Bayona Lagoon to the south, Hurricane Street to the north, multifamily residential uses to the west, and Canal Court and the existing Venice pumping plant to the east. Next slide, please. Specifically, the city approved two coastal development permits. One permit for the proposed auxiliary pumping plant, which includes a two-story, 2,500-square-foot electrical building and associated below-grade infrastructure, including three wet walls, a valve vault, and an inland pipe and diversion structure located at 3813 and 3817 Esplanade and under a portion of Grand Canal. And a second permit for a new surface parking lot on a vacant lot with seven vehicle spaces, including two for public use, a public art installation, bike rack for four bicycles, landscaping, as well as an oil well reembankment at 128 Hurricane Street. These approvals were appealed to the commission by Genevieve Morale, who generally raised concerns about the inconsistency between the city-approved public facilities and parking lot and the underlying land use designation, the lack of sufficient sea level rise analysis, potential water quality impacts to the adjacent wetlands, and visual compatibility of the building and power equipment with the neighborhood or community character. Staff recommends the commission find that a substantial issue exists because the city's findings do not evaluate whether the project may inadvertently or intentionally discharge pollutants into the Grand Canal or the lagoon, nor do they assess the adequacy of the permeable yard areas and drainage systems in avoiding water quality impacts to surrounding coastal waters. Furthermore, the city did not adequately address sea level rise hazards because the city did not consider how the proposed development minimizes risks over the long term, particularly given the project's location in a known flood plain and immediately adjacent to a tightly-influenced waterway. In addition, the clearest appeal ground raised is that the city approved a use inconsistent with the Venice Land Use Plan, which is the residential land use designation for all the sites without an LEP amendment. In addition, as approved by the city, the height of the electrical building and sideyard setback was inconsistent with the development standards of the Venice LEP. The appeal also raised issues such as general concerns about the exterior maintenance of the existing pumping plant and the addition of public parking in the new parking lot. However, these do not rise to the level of a substantial issue under the Coastal Act as either feel to raise valid yet for three grounds for appeal or do not raise significant coastal resource concerns. Unless three or more commissioners wish to hold a hearing on the substantial issue determination, substantial issue will be deemed to exist, and we will move on to the commission's de novo and dual CDP action.
Can I ask, is now the appropriate time to do ex parte's, or should we wait? Wait, okay. So do three or more commissioners wish to have a hearing on substantial issue? No? Okay, let's move forward. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the permit applications. Can we move to the next slide, too, please? Thank you. The city has made several revisions to the project during the de novo and dual CDP application process. For the pumping plant site, the city lowered the parapet wall from 30.39 feet to 30 feet in order to meet the LEP height standard, agreed to move power equipment out of the sideyard setback to meet LEP setback standards, and added three onsite parking spaces for employees and two public on-street parking spaces. Next slide, please. In addition, the revisions to the parking lot site include a redesign of the stormwater system to include a bioswale, dedication of all seven spaces in the parking lot for public use, and addition of a three-and-a-half-foot concrete wall along the property line. Next slide. The Coastal Act requires water quality and marine resources be protected in new development projects. The city now proposes a bioswale to further treat stormwater runoff from the proposed surface parking lot before it reaches the lagoon. As proposed in condition, the catch basin and bioswale will be designed to handle the 85th percentile 24-hour storm event to ensure current and future storm events prevent significant runoff into, polluted runoff into the lagoon. Any runoff from the auxiliary pumping plant will be captured and redirected to the pumping plant, preventing any runoff from the site into Grand Canal. Staff recommend special conditions for a water quality and hydrology plan and construction pollution prevention plan to further protect water quality and the biological productivity of the adjacent wetlands. Next slide, please. Thank you. No new permanent development will occur within the canal- Thank you. No new permanent development will occur within the canal or wetlands on-site. However, the project requires construction of a temporary cofferdam in the canal channel to divert flows temporarily impacting 463 square feet of wetland transitional buffer, 108 square feet of intertidal mud flat and coastal salt marsh, and 1,342 square feet of subtidal bottom. To mitigate this impact, the applicant proposes to restore 524 square feet of coastal salt marsh, accomplishing a nearly five-to-one mitigation ratio with the appropriate native species. The subtitle mud bottom area will naturally be recolonized by native algae and epiphyton and infanol and vertebrates following completion of the project. The 463 square feet of non-native grassland on the slope immediately above the coastal salt marsh does not require mitigation, but the applicant will restore and enhance 566 square feet of this area into appropriate transitional wetland buffer habitat. To that end, Special Condition 15 requires a final revised habitat restoration plan to ensure restoration is implemented and includes an appropriate plant pallet. And Special Condition 12 ensures adjacent wetland wildlife are adequately protected from the effects of light pollution and building-related hazards. Next slide, please. The project site is in a low-lying coastal area vulnerable to multiple coastal hazards, including but not limited to flooding from sea level rise and storm events. The Coastal Act requires new development be cited and designed to minimize risks from hazards. In this case, citing the proposed auxiliary pumping plant adjacent to the existing facility is essential as relocating it would not minimize the risk of sewage spills from the current capacity-constrained system. The existing pumping plant is located at a low point in the sewer network and must pump wastewater beneath the Marina Del Rey Channel to the Hyperion Treatment Plant in Playa Del Rey, an elevation gain of approximately 60 feet. Placing the auxiliary pumps and diversion structure elsewhere would not provide the necessary hydraulic capacity or redundancy needed during wet weather or extreme storm events. Thus, especially given the potential for water quality and biological resource impacts that would occur should the existing and proposed auxiliary pumping plant expansion be damaged by coastal hazards is very important such hazards are adequately addressed. These hazards, these hazards are currently addressed through ongoing tide gate maintenance and operations in a combination of site-specific engineering solutions, including dry floodproofing, design for hydrostatic loads and waterproofing to prevent the flow of water into the pumping plant building, including doors and substructure hatches. However, several special conditions are still necessary to further minimize risk, including Special Condition 10, which requires reevaluation of the project's vulnerability to coastal hazards by 2050 or before a CDP is required for repairs, upgrades, replacement, or similar, whichever comes first. Special Condition 11, which requires a development of a tsunami evacuation and safety plan, and Special Condition 4 requires applicant and their successors and assigns to assume the risk of pursuing development in a hazardous area. Next slide, please. The revised project enhances public access by providing seven public parking spaces within the surface parking lot, as well as two new on-street public parking spaces as seen on the slide. The city also proposes four bicycle parking spaces adjacent to the public parking lot. To maximize public access and minimize impacts during construction, a special condition has been required for a public parking sign program to alert the public of the available parking in the surface parking lot and a special condition requiring a traffic, a traffic control plan during construction. Next slide. The auxiliary pumping plant and parking lot parcels are currently designated for multifamily residential use by the Venice LUP. To address the land use and LUP policy inconsistencies and avoid prejudicing a future local coastal program for Venice, Special Condition 2 requires effective certification of an LUP amendment to change the effective, or to change the land use designation of the site to allow the proposed public facility as a legally permitted use and establish appropriate development standards for this type of infrastructure at this location. Additionally, the newly proposed CMU wall at the lagoon side of the parking lot is inconsistent with the LUP setback as proposed. As such, Special Condition 1 requires the city to remove the CMU wall from the final plans. Although the site is located within a residential neighborhood, the proposed structure as designed and conditioned is consistent with the Venice LUP development standards, which are intended to ensure compatibility with community character. Additionally, the project would not result in significant new impacts to public views or alter the existing neighborhood character. Lastly, there is an addendum for this item to update the record of the correspondence the commission received to provide a response to those comments and finally to provide minor revisions to the staff report. Many of the comment letters sought mitigation for the impacts associated with the proposed development, some of which were addressed in the staff report, while others must be addressed through other state or local requirements. The letters generally raise concerns about the consistency with the Venice LUP, environmental justice, environmental impacts and public access, to name a few. Full responses to these concerns were addressed in the addendum. In one revision to the staff report, staff have added language to Special Condition 1 requiring that any changes to the proposed development related to tsunami design requirements be reflected in the final plans unless such changes are substantial and would require an amendment. In closing, staff believe that the proposed project as conditioned conforms with both the Chapter Three policies of the Coastal Act and the development policies of the certified Venice LUP. Thus, staff is recommending the commission approve the project subject to the special conditions, which can be found on pages 36 through 49 of the staff report. Because there are two de novo CDPs and one, yes, yeah, two de novo CDPs and one dual CDP for this project, there are three sets of motions that can be found on pages 34 and 35 of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation and we are available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, now I will ask if there are any ex parte's on this matter. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to report that on August 28th, I met with Don Schmitz, who is a consultant working on behalf of LA Sanitation. And he outlined and discussed the project from his perspective. And on the 9th of September, I had a lengthy conversation with Ms. Kenya Lee, who is a resident who owns and lives in the property right next to where the proposed station is to be built.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes, the exact same two for me. So I'll share that I had a meeting on the 8th of September with Don Schmitz where he outlined the project from his perspective, along with, you know, some of the explanation about where the effluent that's in this pipe comes from. And then on the same day, I had a meeting with Kenya Lee, Steve Bradbury, Robin Radesu, Marsha Hanscom, and Wendy Sue Rosen, who explained their concerns and perhaps some thoughts about alternative solutions for the area. Also heard some concerns about the parking and obviously the construction right next door to Ms. Lee's home. All those documents have been appropriately submitted to staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. And very briefly, this morning on my way into the hearing, I spoke for just 30 seconds with Don Schmitz, representative from the applicant, and he introduced me to Christine Heinrich. Excuse me, I think I'm justice. I apologize. And just the only exchange of information was that they are very excited to be here and looking forward to the hearing. With that, I would like to open the, the public hearing, excuse me, and we'll begin with the applicant who is allotted 15 minutes for their presentation.
Good morning, commissioners. If we could wait one moment before we start the clock. Okay, so I want to start off by thanking your staff. They put a lot of work into this, and we've been working on this for years and years as well for this critical infrastructure improvement. So the Venice Auxiliary Pumping Plant, or the VAP, is something that you will see is absolutely essential to be in compliance with federal and state law and just good environmental practices. This will improve the reliability of the sanitation district, and it will address potential disasters from earthquakes, floods, and things of that nature. I'm going to move past this. Your staff did a great job on orienting you geographically. This is the area that is served. It all flows downhill. There's a lot of puns that can come up in a presentation like this. I'm going to avoid them as much as possible. But it's an enormous urban area and it all flows down to this low point, which is where the VAP is proposed. Over 222,000 people are served by this, all the way past Santa Monica, the west side of Los Angeles, up into the Pacific Palisades. That's 40 million gallons a day of effluent that comes down into this area. And as, I know that you are intimately aware of just how disastered it is when there are, when there are sewage spills in regards to the environmental damage and the closure of beaches, et cetera. Implications of failure, there was a minor sewage spill that came out of Laguna Beach. It closed down 22 miles of the coastline, all the way from San Clemente up to Newport Beach, and that was a small one. The Federal Clean Water Act requires sanitation districts to address these sorts of issues under the 1972 Clean Water Act, and the state is very active on this as well. But before we get there, the Center for Disease Control requires sanitation districts to have emergency response and preventive maintenance systems. This is something that our country is keenly aware of and is seeking to address. At the state level, the state puts their money where their mouth is. They've got a clean water state revolving fund to help sanitation districts to upgrade their systems and have redundancy. It's important to note that this plan is not one which is going to be funded from the state revolving fund. It is something which is, is being paid from, by the ratepayers. But I just wanted to put that up there to show that this is not something where they're just passing regulations and laws. The state taxpayers are doing what they can to upgrade these systems as well. The sanitary sewer system general order requirements are that sewer agencies must maintain emergency response plans for overflows and failures. This is from State Water Quality Control Board. Title 22 requires 20-day storage, and when you're talking 40 million gallons, there's just no way you're going to have 20 days of storage, but you must have independent equipment to back up should you have some sort of power outage or some sort of crisis in regards to the effluent flowing into a particular area. The water discharge requirement from the Water Quality Control Board requires the city to have a comprehensive management plan, including emergency response, maintenance, and improvements. Is it possible that I could watch the clock? If you guys could put that up, I would be grateful. It's because I want to be mindful of the time. This, this particular, thank you, this particular existing plant was built in 1957. It's the largest pumping plant in the city of Los Angeles, and it has limited capacity. Right now, if we get wet weather or if we have a problem, we are coming very close to having a disaster. Am I, there we go. This is the existing site improvements. I'm going to move along quickly here. Your staff did a great job on showing this. This shows the parking lot, the actual VAP and the surrounding areas. So the existing pump station has been there again since 1957. You can see in this picture, this is from 1960. The neighborhood grew up around it. There was some homes. There was a lot of oil development in the area. You can see a subsequent picture here in the residential areas. That's the existing pump station. And then in the, by the late 60s, early 70s, a lot of the residential development had, had grown up in the surrounding area. So let's talk about 30251 of the Coastal Act and protection of public views. This, this plant has been reduced in height a couple of feet. It's 30 feet tall, which means if you see in the surrounding neighborhood here that it's right in the average of the height of the residential multifamily and single-family homes in the area. It's not a giant infrastructure project which is going to overwhelm the, the neighborhood. It has a setback of 52 feet from the canal. The average setback from the residential development on the Grand Canal is 16 feet, a little over 16 feet. That's an important issue reflected in the land use plan because the commission has always historically wanted to make sure that development's not too close to the canals because they can have impacts on avian wildlife. And so we're obviously going to be significantly more than what the pattern precedent is out there. And this is very frustrating that my PowerPoint keeps locking up. Next slide, maybe it works better. Could you pause the clock for a second? Okay, so this, oh, and now it's jumping ahead. So this is a rendering, shoot me a cricket. So this is a rendering from the Grand Canal. You can see the surrounding residential development is significantly larger than, than the building for the VAP. And the staff report appropriately finds that this project will not be inconsistent with the neighborhood character as specified in the land use plan. The findings are there. I want to show you some photographs of the area to go on further under 30251. This is a view from Canal Street. The, the plant would be off to your left. You can see that it's not going to block any public views going, looking towards Canal Street, towards the Biona Lagoon. This is across from the Grand Canal. This is on Hurricane Street, which dead ends up to the Grand Canal. This is again the rendering of what you would see from the, the dead end on Hurricane Street and that the pumping plant would be smaller than the adjacent residential development. This is a view from Via Dolce, looking across Biona Lagoon. And the pumping station would be back behind the existing pumping station. You will not see it at all. And so the staff report reflects that the project therefore is consistent with Section 30251 of the Coastal Act to protect public views. Yes, we have a parking, more than adequate parking. There are seven spaces required by the Venice Land Use Plan for the VAP. Three of them are onsite. Four more are located in the parking lot, which we're going to be improving. Something that's been left out in some of the opponent's correspondence is that we're also required to have biz parking. That stands for the beach improvement zone. This is an impacted parking area, and the LUP requires us to provide two parking spots for that as well. And although the project is exempt from ADA requirements for the employees, we're putting an additional ADA parking spot in there. We think that that's part of the environmental justice aspect of the Coastal Act. And of course, these walkways that are along the Biona Lagoon and the Grand Canal are very, very important. So we are including an ADA parking spot. We are making improvements on, on Hurricane, which is right now a dirt lot, and you can see that there's going to be a sidewalk that's put in. There's going to be additional parking in the area. So the project will also add some additional on-street parking for the general public. And we are in complete agreement with the signage condition that the staff has put into the staff report. And the findings, of course, specify that the project parking meets the, the requirements of both the Coastal Act and the LUP. So public access is well addressed in this. There's a 1930s oil well on the parking lot portion of the project that was abandoned. We are going to be going in as part of this project to cap it properly. This is something we think that is very important as it pertains to the protection of the marine environment. And the project is conditioned accordingly. This is the dirt lot, which has a very attractive chain-link fence around it right now. And it is going to be beautified. It is very important. That's the walkway that goes around Biona Lagoon. Not only is it going to be providing critical parking for this impacted area, but it will be beautified with appropriate landscaping and of course, an ADA lot. It will be closed at nighttime. It includes a bioswale, and the landscaping pallet is something that is part of the project and has been also conditioned in the staff report. There's also a landscaping plan for the, the plant itself, the VAP. However, there's not a bioswale on this because all runoff from this plant is going to go straight into the pumping system and be sent out over into Hyperion, so it will not have any impacts on the marine environment. And the staff report concludes that the project therefore is consistent with 30230 and 30231 of the Coastal Act to protect the marine environment. So there's mitigation measures which are required in the EIR, a lot of them, including protection of ESHA. And we are in complete agreement with that, and staff has required the mitigation plan be something that is vetted and approved by the staff. That includes the restoration of the vegetation within the Grand Canal. There's the, the new diversion structure that will be placed in, and on a four-to-one basis, we will be enhancing the habitat within the Grand Canal area. During construction, there will be monitoring of water quality as well. That's just one of many mitigation measures which we're required to comply with. You can see this is Special Condition 15 in the staff report that the mitigation plans be reviewed and vetted by your staff. I'm going to move quickly on this. Your staff already discussed the fact that we need to address sea level rise. This is the Marina Del Rey tide gates. The elevation is 14 feet for sea level to get over that. Tide gates give us a, a nice bit of protection in regards to storm surge and sea level rise. But as referenced in the staff report, we're still going to be waterproofing this facility completely. And the project is, I think, consistent with your interpretive guidelines to address sea level rise, tiered response. Let's see what happens. We may get a little sea level rise. We may get a lot of sea level rise. And so this, the project has been conditioned. And so the project has been conditioned that in 20 years, we will give a follow-up report to this coastal commission addressing the status of sea level rise and any mitigation measures, should they be necessary, unlikely but prudent. Forty million gallons a day come down to this. This is the existing pump station, and that's the magnificent downfall for a problem that occurs. It goes right into Biona Lagoon, which is an environmentally sensitive habitat area. Forty million gallons a day represents 1.6 million gallons an hour, or something like 22,000 gallons per minute. 15,000 gallon, a very small spill into the Biona Lagoon, closed beaches in this particular area. And this is what would happen should there be a failure with 40 million gallons a day. There would be a plume of effluent that would go all the way down to torrents. It would literally fill Biona Lagoon with sludge. It would completely pollute Marina Del Rey. It would be an environmental apocalypse. And right now, the contingency plan with a 60-inch pipe that brings all the effluent from the entire west side of Los Angeles down to this area, if they can't get on top of it, if they don't have redundancy and emergency systems in place, it is literally run for your lives. It would be a horrible thing. It would be something commensurate with what you are intimately familiar with, which is the environmental crisis down in the Tijuana River. And I know you've put a lot of energy and a lot of attention into this. There are 35 million gallons up to effluent which comes out of the Tijuana River, and that is enough to, this is a webpage you can log on, to close all the beaches from the border, all the way up to the entrance of San Diego Harbor. I'm pleased to announce that our federal government seems to be working proactively now and getting some sort of accommodation in regards to the Tijuana River to address this crisis that you've put so much time and energy in. We'll see. But the point is, is this is actually less effluent than the bad-case scenario that could happen at the Venice Pumping Plant if they don't have the Venice Auxiliary Pumping Plant. And this is something that responsible stewards of the environment have recognized. This is a letter from the Bay Foundation. The Bay Foundation supports the city in regards to the activities to proceed with this plant, to have the redundancy necessary to make sure that we are walking our talk in regards to what our federal and state laws are and what the Coastal Act mandates to protect the environment from an earthquake, an extended power outage, things of that nature. We also have a letter from Heal the Bay that has been submitted in support. The proposed project is critical to protecting one of Los Angeles' most sensitive and iconic coastal habitats, the Venice Canal, Biona Lagoon, and the adjacent beaches. It just makes sense. So in conclusion, the project ensures a reliable wastewater service system for Los Angeles. The project prevents sewage spills during extreme wet weather events. And by the way, we have a separate system. The stormwater doesn't go into our sewage treatment plants. We get impacts because there's so many manholes, just from the little hole that's on top of the manhole, it can really spike the amount of water that goes into the sewage treatment plants. It's adaptable to climate change impacts, including sea level rise, which is the responsible and appropriate thing to do and consistent with the Coastal Act. It provides community benefits, public art, expanded coastal parking. It maintains access. It's required by federal and state law. This is something that we have to do. So I want to thank you for your time, and I will retain there a little bit of time for rebuttal, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Okay, Chris.
Okay, we have three people from public agencies signed up as available for questions. We have a number, or we have actually a number more than that. But for public commenters, we have 17 people sign up to speak, one in the room. We'll start with Tom Ford in the room.
Tom Ford, CEO of the Bay Foundation. Happy to be here today in person. I think that was an excellent summary. I want to thank the city of Los Angeles sanitation for all the consideration and work that they've put into this. I've been involved in the coastal intercept sewer for about the past 20 years. We consider it to be a cornerstone of our comprehensive efforts to continue to progress towards improved water quality holistically across our iconic coastline in LA. So very much in support of the project. Appreciate all of your time, and I'll be here if there are any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now moving to our Zoom speakers, we'll start with Kenya Lee, followed by Robin Rudisil, and then Steve Bradbury. Kenya Lee, when you're able to, please unmute and be in.
If you could please wait to start the clock so that you could go to slide nine, I believe. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Kenya Lee, and I live directly next to the proposed Venice Auxiliary Pumping Plant. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family, especially my five-year-old daughter, about the real impacts of this project and what it will do to our lives. The city's own environmental impact concluded that several impacts are significant and unavoidable. During construction, pile driving will reach noise levels of 98 decibels at my home. If you can see on this slide, it shows exactly where this pumping plant will butt up against my home. This red arrow here shows you that that area is being taken as well. So I'm going to be directly next to it. Pile driving will reach 98 decibels, far above the safe limit, that's 85. At those levels, there is no safe exposure. My child and I can simply, we cannot remain in our home under these conditions. Vibration impacts are predicted up to 1.781 inches per second, exceeding both annoyance and structural damage thresholds. Dust and traffic, dust and traffic is going to be up to 48 trips on a narrow street. The release of particles, matter directly next to my home threatens my daughter's health and making our property uninhabitable during these years of construction. I also want to note that my house is a two-unit dwelling. It impacts the impossibility for me to rent my other unit, and that's going to create a direct loss of income that my family relies on for everyday living. This is not just construction inconvenience, it's a displacement of my family, a risk to my child's health, and an economic burden that we should not have to bear. I heard in the presentation of, you know, it's going to serve the west side. I should not have to bear the brunt of the entire west side to be unhoused and economically impacted negatively for this. I respectfully urge the commission to add conditions to this project to require relocation, support, and compensation for the loss of rental income caused by this project. Venice has historically been on the end of environmental burdens. This is an environmental justice issue, and I ask the commission to please uphold Section 3021, Section 4, and Article 10 that requires the commission to protect the right of private owners because I'm not being protected in any shape or form with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next will be Robin Rudisil, Bethany Gorfine, Marcia Hanscom.
Hi, it's Robin Rudisil here. This huge sewage pumping plant expansion is being forced into the heart of a sensitive wetland surrounded by ESHA within the dual zone. Adjacent to both Grand Canal and Biona Lagoon, there is simply no more sensitive area in the LA coastal zone. Given this, the city's Bureau of Engineering should be bending over backwards to keep the impacts on the residential neighborhood and surrounding ESHA to a bare minimum. But instead, they are doing the opposite, the bare minimum that they can get away with. And instead of mitigating impacts, they are causing even greater impacts on the area by adding an unnecessary public parking lot. They originally thought they needed the lot for some of the project's parking, but it turns out they don't, and it will be for the public only. No biz spaces are necessary because there is no customer or other public parking needed adjacent to this plant. To keep this public parking lot as part of the project is the ultimate adding insult to injury, to not only have the impacts of this huge project on the neighborhood in ESHA, but to add an unnecessary parking lot and all of the associated adverse impacts. The city should use the lot for staging during construction and then sell it when the project is complete. This project is so traumatic for this neighborhood, and adding this parking lot in the residential neighborhood would be daily torture of traffic, noise, fumes, and other nuisances. Staff says if there are issues, call the police, but the facts are that the police don't come. It's three feet away from the adjacent residential building. We've seen nothing on how the lot would be required to be managed and controlled and how it would be secured at night. Also, there's an ESHA mitigation plan that provides for a small pedestrian bridge over the Grand Canal to expanded parking on Villa Dolce, which is a very feasible alternative that would substantially lessen significant adverse effects on the environment and on the neighbors. Our community is not trying to stop this critical infrastructure. We're asking for fairness, compliance with the law, and meaningful mitigation, not significant increased unnecessary impacts of a public parking lot. Please continue this hearing so staff can take a little more time to work with the city and the public, and these serious issues can be more fully vetted and resolved.
Thank you. Next is Bethany Gorfine, Marcia Hanscom, and Suzanne Cumming. Bethany Gorfine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, thank you. Today's conversation is about a parking lot. It's not about the building of a second sewer plant in a residential neighborhood, or how it affects our lives and livelihoods for the next three-plus years. Not the noise levels of building over the lagoon or the dirt hammering drilling vibrations we will live with. Not the staging on Villa Dolce, not the influx of workers. We know this because we lived with it on the dual main project for over three-plus years. Lots of promises made about busing in workers, sound barriers, fixing cracks in our homes, or extra security for us never happened. This is about seven public use and four bicycle parking spaces for VAP employees. Seriously, we have beach parking lot at the end of Washington. We have a street where I live called Villa Dolce, where there is public parking on both sides of the street and access to Lighthouse Bridge to the ocean. How does seven spots for the public, open 24 hours a day, make any sense, or isn't the best for public access? It seems unfortunate to upend a community and invite more vans, overnight parking, vandalism, graffiti, with no security. There is a parking solution that's been dealt with in the next phase of the project that deals with public access and a future for more parking with a bridge linking Driftwood and offering 40 parking spaces. It also gives residents another opportunity to get out of the marina during earthquakes, tsunami, et cetera. Use your time to focus on this solution that truly helps the public. Don't add to our worries about safety and security on the Silver Strand and all the residents of Hurricane and neighboring streets. Come see for yourself. That presentation was very slick. I've seen it before. We lived through it with the dual main project. This project is coming. We understand that. We're just asking for no ridiculous uses for lack of security for our community and certainly the residents on Hurricane. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia Hanscom, Suzanne Cumming, Patricia McPherson. Marcia Hanscom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Honorable commissioners and staff, Marcia Hanscom with Defend Biona Wetlands and the Coastal Lands Action Network. Of course, we support this project moving forward. We know that it needs to, but we do not think that sufficient mitigation has been included in the city's consultant's recommendations. This property unfortunately was built before the Coastal Act, before CEQA, before any environmental laws, and it was sited in an area that is at the crossroads of the city-owned parts of the Biona Wetlands, the Biona Lagoon Marine Preserve and the Grand Canal Lagoon. Because of the Bolsochica decision, you cannot impact ESHA. These are ESHA areas. However, we know this has to go forward, so you really have to have the least environmentally damaging alternative. And we have presented that to the city. We presented that to staff, and that is in the form of going forward with the second part of the Grand Canal Restoration Project, which has been languishing for over a decade now. It's on the city's engineering website. It would provide 30 more parking spaces than this project would, and it would also include a walking path. This project will impede public access. There's a walking path currently surrounding this facility, and for several years of construction, the public will not be able to go there. It also will impede the ESHA, and it's not just, you know, this manicured version that the consultant showed you. This is a very vital connection to the ocean with many more species than the staff report showed. And there are species that are rare, unlike what staff concluded. So you've got to include, in order to comply with your CEQA equivalency, you've got to include the least environmentally damaging alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Cumming, Patricia McPherson, and Chris Koo. Suzanne Cumming.
Suzanne Cumming, member of Defend Biona Wetlands. This project will impact ESHA, both the Biona Lagoon Marine Preserve and the Grand Canal Lagoon, for years, and not just the small area where the equipment is dropped in the mud. More work will be done there for years. The lagoon waters are connected, and the species using these waters and the ESHA edges will be impacted. Noise and lights will significantly impact the wildlife, not only neighbors. The conditions recommended by staff don't go far enough. There should be no work allowed at night. There will be significant disruption of the public access walkpath on both sides of the pumping plant structure. Again, the staff recommended mitigations don't go far enough. There is a plan. I don't know if you've reviewed it. I hope you have. There is a plan for the Grand Canal Lagoon Restoration on the city's engineering website, a plan that was vetted with the community and designed by and with professional engineers, biologists, and public access specialists. This plan offers environmentally superior alternatives for both public access and ESHA impacts from this project. In order to comply with the commission's CEQA equivalency requirements, you cannot ignore this alternative. Have you reviewed it? Please do. Please do, as the letter from Defend Biona Wetlands and three other groups asks you to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Patricia McPherson, Chris Koo, and then Robert Roy Van der Hook. Patricia McPherson.
Patricia McPherson, Grassroots Coalition. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, Patricia McPherson. I'm a founding member of Biona Lagoon Marine Preserve. I worked over, what, 20 years ago with the Coastal Conservancy to create Biona Lagoon Marine Preserve and keep it as an ESHA habitat. So I agree with all of the speakers that have spoken thus far, including the person that lives directly next door. There needs to be compensation for this, but I agree that there needs to be a greater study of what's going on in order to address the impacts that are there. We all have to support this because it is part of the dual main, but aside from that, there are so many issues that still need to be addressed. And I, for instance, have been involved with the oil field gas issues for approximately 30 years, and what I see you addressing is a well from the 30s on the property where the pump is itself, which this pumping place has spilled in the past, so it's good to update it. But there is that well, and you need to be able to address the abandonment of that well. Is it currently leaking? What gas mitigation systems will you put in? There is also a well on the property that is just to the west of that property that is not being addressed. So there are two wells out there according to the DOG map, Division of Oil and Gas Map 120. I would like to see that. I would like to see that addressed. There is also a well, we know that these wells all leak that are from that timeframe. EG Curtis is in the middle of the curve there, right in front of that property, it is leaking on a daily basis. All of this needs to be addressed, and I go back to 30231 and 32 with the Coastal Commission's ability to address, to protect against oil field gas issues for effective containment. You have the ability to address these issues, you have the ability to ask, and I do appreciate that they have said that this is a substantial issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Koo, followed by Robert Roy Van der Hook, and then Tony Goldberg. Chris Koo.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, you can. Yes, so I wanted to, I've been hearing all the great speakers, great points, and I just would like to impress you all upon the concept of, you know, nothing is really mutually exclusive to this plan. The great work that they're going to do with the sewage plant, it can be done along the same lines of providing all the damage mitigation that folks have brought up. They can both go forward. So I think the question now is, in detail, how does it both go forward? How do we mitigate all these damages? And I think some speakers have mentioned the Grand Canal Lagoon Restoration Plan, and I believe there is a very scientific plan that is even on the city's engineering website. I mean, that has a lot of credibility to us as, you know, residents and the general public. I mean, we really do trust what our city engineers, you know, claim to work well and to be beneficial, and the sort of the best practice going forward. And I am just really curious as well if any of you have actually looked at that plan, because as I understand it, it does follow all the ESHA, you know, regulations and plans, and complying with SEQA, and all those important things that were protecting our environment, especially being such a sensitive habitat area, and we know that there's just tons of wildlife, and years of noise and light and impact, this is a serious issue. And I'm sorry if I missed it, but I didn't hear those kinds of impacts in the presentation or the mitigation of damages discussion. So that was somewhat concerning. We really do want to go forward with both plans. All the mitigation damage that you can do according to this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Roy Van der Hook, Tony Goldberg, and Jane Vilas Mitchell. Robert Roy Van der Hook.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Robert Jan Van der Hook, and I'm a conservation biologist and environmental biological scientist, and there are many problems here. This is a piecemealing project that links to other city projects at the City Parks Department, State of California, federal government, LA County, in the Greater Biona Wetlands ecosystem. You can't isolate this project from looking at the linkages to all the other projects in the area. For example, the Elsagunda Blue Butterfly federally endangered, needs the United States government involved, and the Crotches Bumblebee is newly listed by the State of California as endangered, and that occurred in where the parking lot, vacant lot, park that used to be vegetated, but the city knew they were scraping it bare because they didn't want there to be any fauna or flora there. Regarding the lagoon, LA County Museum of Natural History Scientist John Garth in 1980 wrote a book, published a chapter on the fiddler crab, Eucocrenulata, and this is at the northern range limit of the fiddler crab. It's falsely not, it's not north of here, it's got a genuine population here, and because it's at the northern range, that makes it particularly rare, and it's part of our tropical, subtropical fauna that's here, and it's an important prey item to the yellow-crowned night heron that's just nested for the first time in our area, right here in Marina Del Rey, and it's sole food, most important food item, are crabs like the fiddler crab. In 1952, Keith Woodwork published Proceedings of the National Museum from USC, and Polydora nucalis, a special worm, was found, and it's the type locality, and because this is the type locality and we're still considered rare, this is an important place to protect that worm in the infauna and the epifana area. In terms of the California horn snail, it ties into the ecology that killifish prey on the snail, the snowy egret preys on the killifish, and they use the horn snail to gauge biodiversity health, and because of the number of worms that are found in the snail, Biona has been, and this whole region here has been determined to be very important biologically within Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Goldberg, Jane Vilas Mitchell, and Beverly Palmer. Tony Goldberg.
Yes, hi, good afternoon. So there's no denying that we do need this plant, so that's not what I'm going to speak about. What I'm going to speak about is how I strongly oppose the parking lot at 128 Hurricane. I think this is a poorly thought-out plan that's no longer necessary, given the newly-established employee parking spaces that are within the recently-modified plan of, I think it's three or four spaces. We already have a parking lot at the end of Washington, that's a huge parking lot, so to put another parking lot for four spaces, where I didn't see anything in the plans as to how it's going to be monitored, how does it close at night, you know, who is going to enforce it? You're putting a public parking lot in the middle of a residential area, and that just doesn't make any common sense by any means. Additionally, I think it would also negatively impact the residents, of which I am one, and I live on Galleon Street near Pacific, by increasing air and noise pollution, and really decreasing our safety. There's possibility for it to be a haven, you know, just for people roaming around and, you know, not doing anything, and I think also it has an impact of having just unnecessary traffic going up and down that street, as well as impacting public services. Like, what if the plant needs some service and you have a ton of cars there, or you have, you know, cars, it's already a narrow space on that street, Hurricane, and to have cars going up and down, and when you have a fire truck go down that street, no other car can pass it, it's stuck in the middle of the road. So to add more access to more cars on that street does not serve the community at all, and I hope you rethink that.
Thank you. Jane Vilas Mitchell, Beverly Palmer, Elian Gons. Jane Vilas Mitchell.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I live literally around the corner from this location. There is no need for a parking lot. The parking lot on the beach starts at Washington, but it extends several blocks. I walk this area daily. You're talking about a four-minute walk to go from the parking lot to this location. So just give these people passes so they don't have to pay the parking, and that's it, that solves it. And, you know, seriously, zero need for a parking lot. But on a larger scale, I see this whole project as a major campaign in the ongoing war on wildlife in this area. So people who are promoting this say, well, there are setbacks. That's not how wild animals think. They see the commotion, they hear the noise, they stay away. So this is creating a roadblock that is going to prevent wildlife from going from the Marina Del Rey jetty through the lagoon over to the Venice Canal. So it's going to create a roadblock, and these animals are already under assault. The July 4th fireworks was like a bomb dropping on these animals at the Marina Del Rey jetty, going from hundreds, if not thousands, of pelicans to zero pelicans on July 5th. So we have to look at this in the larger context. If we created a plan to wipe out wildlife in this area, we couldn't do better than we're doing right now. I'm urging everybody, look at the big picture, see how you can mitigate the impacts on wildlife, because when we wipe them all out and live in a dead zone, nobody's going to want to live here, not me. It's not the condos and the Teslas that I love about this area, it's the wildlife, and we are systematically exterminating them. The California Coastal Commission needs to draw a line in the sand and protect these animals, and there is a plan that is on the city engineering website that will do that. Please follow that plan.
Thank you. Next, Beverly Palmer, Elian Gons, and then Jim Fitzgerald. Beverly Palmer.
Good morning, thank you for having me. I am an attorney, I represent Kenya Lee, who you heard from earlier. Ms. Lee explained that she is the most proximate neighbor to this facility. The environmental impact report that the city prepared discloses that noise at Ms. Lee's residence is well above safe levels during the entire construction phase, but what I do want to make sure you know is that other, she is by far the most impacted from a noise perspective. Other people live close by, but she is so close that the noise levels are truly shocking. The 98 decibels during pile driving is a noise level that is like standing, you know, next to a jet plane. So, and as we studied the city's revised plans, we observed that the transformers for the project are even closer to her house than had originally been analyzed, and there has been no analysis of the additional noise impact there. Ms. Lee bought this property next to two residentially zoned parcels a few years ago, and she, fairly recently. She bought a duplex so she could be an owner renter, so she could rent out that property and have an income stream. And this project, you know, handling 40 million gallons of sewage a day coming through here, she's really bearing a lot of the brunt of that activity during the construction phase. And Public Resources Code 30212.5, which I don't think has been raised, it's a Chapter 3 policy, requires the commission to consider distributing public facilities so as to mitigate the impacts, social or otherwise, so that overuse of the public in any single area is addressed. This is not your typical thinking about overuse, where you have a lot of people coming to visit an area, but this is really overuse of this area by sewage, and you can mitigate that impact of that, social or otherwise. You have the authority to require the city to help accommodate Ms. Lee. They've already, in the EIR, agreed to relocate people during working hours. That's not sufficient for someone who has a family, and it doesn't mitigate for lost rental income that was a reasonable expectation of Ms. Lee's when she purchased the residence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elian Gons, I see that you're on two devices, we seem to be having trouble promoting you in on your, the device that's not the phone, but you should be able to unmute on one of your devices now. If you're using the phone, you should be able to unmute by dialing star six.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Yes. So I appreciated the presentations, and I've heard all of the other issues. I have several other issues which has to do with polluting the air, noise destruction. We all moved into that neighborhood because it was one of the quietest and most beautiful in the area, and now we're going to have problems with emergency vehicles coming in because you've got work trucks and everything else. We've got children in the area that are going to need to be much more careful about where they're walking, what they're doing, so more supervision. I didn't see any monitoring about any of this at all. I live two buildings up from the supposed million-dollar parking lot that was purchased, and so the noise and the air pollution is going to affect me dramatically, and I have people who live with me who have respiratory issues. So I'm very concerned about safety, security, emergency vehicles, pollution, air pollution, and all of that, as well as the unnecessary parking, which has been discussed many times, and the possibility of actually taking a look around the corner and actually looking at it from a different point of view. There's no reason that we can't all be happy and all have what we need. The city can have what it needs, and the residents can have what they need. That's it with me.
Thank you. Jim Fitzgerald, we're having trouble promoting you as a panelist. You should be able to unmute now as an attendee. Jim Fitzgerald. While we're waiting for them to unmute, we did have three more names signed up that we're unable to find. If I call your name, please raise your hand in the attendee list. Steve Bradbury, David Turnbull, Wendy Su Rosen. Again, Steve Bradbury, David Turnbull, Wendy Su Rosen, and then Jim Fitzgerald, if you can unmute.
Was Jim the gentleman who tried to speak during the general public comment? I just want to make sure we have that person covered as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey.
Okay, we hear you, Jim.
Yeah, I just had a really quick question, and my concern is that this project, as completed, the end of the street there is essentially going to be only utility on it, and if in the future a different effort, because we're trying to harden all of our infrastructure, somebody says, hey, we should close this off because we don't want anybody to take out this very important pump, does that kind of negate the entire parking solution and kind of throw everything, wrench into that, that design? Because it sure seems like, looking at the finalized plan, you know, putting the secure gate at the end of the street instead of each of these two different utilities would make a lot of sense for security. And that's all, I'll give my time back.
All right, thank you. And I will note that Jim was, the person who just spoke was the one from general public comment who came back to speak. I'm seeing no other hands raised and no other speakers, so Madam Chair.
Great, thank you very much, Chris, and thank you to the public for participating. Now, I will return to the applicant, and you have up to five minutes for rebuttal, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners Don Schmitz, again, on behalf of the applicant. First of all, I want to convey to this commission that we are keenly sensitive to the concerns that were raised by the people that spoke in opposition to this application before you today, very much so. There's been 11 or 12 community meetings that the city facilitated through the EIR and local permit process to do community outreach and try to address their concerns. I would point out that many of the concerns that were raised are not really Coastal Act issues. In fact, some of the concerns which were raised, particularly in regards to the parking lot, are in contradiction to the access policies of the Coastal Act itself, and we've all heard that before, and there's always this tension, this dynamic, as it pertains, would you put the time clock up for me, please? As it pertains to providing adequate parking, public parking, and that's not always a welcome thing in a residential area. That being said, this VAP does require seven parking spaces. It is true that we have three of them actually on the pumping plant grounds, that's the maximum that we can accommodate, but the LUP requires us to have seven, and the biz required, the beach impact zone requires us to have two more, and it's true that we put in an ADA spot as well, although it's not required for this particular project. That doesn't mean that we're cavalier in regards to the concerns of the community, and maximizing public access is something that we're supposed to balance out with the right of private property owners. If it is the will of this commission that that parking lot be fenced and that it have a gate so that it can be closed and controlled at nighttime, we will most certainly implement that. I'm very sensitive to Ms. Lee and her attorney, Ms. Palmer, in their concerns of, she's immediately adjacent to this project, everything can and has been done to try and assuage their concerns, including specificities that pertains to the type of equipment that we have out there to reduce noise impacts. That being said, what they also left out is that the city, I believe, has already scheduled a meeting with them to talk about if, in fact, that they are going to be damaged, that there'd be compensation in regard to that. Not a Coastal Act issue, but I do not want this commission to get the misperception that the applicant is cavalier in regards to their neighbors. I'd ask you to take a look at the cabinets which are back behind you. The sewer line, which comes in already to this area and has been there since the 1950s, is about that diameter, 60 inches. Several of the speakers who expressed concerns about this project acquiesce the fact that there has to be this project going forward. Could you go to the next slide, please? I'd like to talk to you about the geometry of the site and how we have tried to maximize the setbacks from the surrounding area and to be sensitive to the neighbors. So the giant 60-inch sewer main comes down the Grand Canal, and then you have already with the with the existing plant, you have a diversion structure, and this backup plant will have to have a diversion structure as well. We absolutely have to do that. The main 60-inch main is located in the Grand Canal. And the way these systems work is it diverts the incoming effluent into what's called wells. It's basically a big vault, because it comes in and it flows into that area. And these massive pumps, we're going to have three new 18 million gallon per day pumps for the, for the auxiliary pumping plant. That will be located in the subterranean portion of the project that you see right there, in front of the building. Next slide, please. And then back behind it, we have these very large transformers. There, these pumps have tremendous electricity demand. There are requirements, we can't put a block wall or anything in front of it. There's requirements for access. And there's an enormous backup generator also, which is located in the building that you see right there, along with the electrical switching facility and, and the command and control center for this critical infrastructure project. So, we've done the very best we can. We shrunk down the size of the building, a couple hundred square foot. We reduced the height to the maximum amount that we could. We're smaller than much of the development in the area, and we're shorter than much of the development in the area. And as it pertains to the biological impacts, we have a very thoroughly vetted analysis, study, mitigation plan. Your staff is comfortable with it, but they're requiring that be vetted further with them. We will do whatever is necessary. I understood that both Vet, Mr. Vet, Dr. Vanderhook, and Marcia had some criticisms in regards to that. I've known both of them for a long time. But we will comply with whatever your professional staff says that we have to have there. I would note that the best management practices have to be maintained in perpetuity. That's special condition number seven. It's a good project. What we stand in front of you today, ready to take any direction and suggested modifications within reason, we only have so much space to work with. We do have to have the parking lot. We do have to have the diverter coffer that brings the effluent in from the 60-inch line to the pumps. We are required by law to have this backup pumping plant, commissioners. And so with that, I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank the folks who spoke and testified our neighbors, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I will close the public hearing and return to our staff for any comments or responses.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. I also want to thank all of the members of the public for providing their comments today. I do want to speak on a couple of points. Concerns were raised about construction noise and vibration. The city has indicated that they will work with the residents to resolve these concerns. And as noted in the addendum, there are several mitigation measures that the city proposes to address these concerns. And related to the construction timing, the construction hours are limited to the daytime, and there will be no construction work at night. Related to environmental impacts, you know, I would note that our site-specific analysis of the natural resources at the site indicated that these impacts were more appropriately addressed under our wetland and marine resource policies. Additionally, these impacts are temporary and not permanent, and thus the approximate five-to-one mitigation ratio is more than adequate. Related to parking, the city is proposing the public parking, and it maximizes public access consistent with the coastal act in an area that is limited, very limited in public parking. Adjacent or in the nearby vicinity, there is also a public lot, but it costs about $10. And the on-street parking in this area is free and closer to parts of the beach that are farther away from the pier and the lagoon and the canal trails. As proposed, overnight parking would not be allowed. Related to oil spill, there is one oil well located at the, at the site at 128 Hurricane Street. To address these concerns related to the oil spills, special condition nine requires applicant to provide an oil spill prevention and response plan that includes spill prevention practices, to have onsite spill response equipment, that training be provided to onsite personnel, and analysis of the worst-case spill scenario that would identify the specific equipment, personnel, and procedures necessary to contain a spill of that, of that size, and that the applicant identify and maintain a contract with a qualified third-party oil spill and response organization capable of responding to managing these spills. And that concludes my comments unless, you know, I'll pass on to Steve or Keith.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. I'd just like to add a couple very brief comments and observations. And just note that we also received comments from a number of speakers concerned about the, the proposal for a public access parking lot to be part of this project. And I would like to note that public access opportunities under the coastal act are required to be maximized. This public parking lot is an important amenity. It provides public access, not just to the trail system along the lagoon, which is also public, but to nearby beach areas. And the city is proposing this important amenity, and it is consistent with coastal act. I would note that there is no overnight parking as proposed in that parking lot, and the city is proposing signs showing those restricted hours. So we do believe this is an important amenity. I would also just like to note a brief overarching observation about this project, which is, there is an existing pumping plant there today. What is before us is really just the addition of the additional auxiliary pumps, which are intended to provide that redundancy in the event that something goes wrong. And the city is currently, our understanding is that the city is at the edge of their capacity. In the event that there is a problem, if a pump goes offline, the city has been renting pumps, and that's not a good long-term solution. So without this project, and our staff's evaluation, if we don't have this project and it's able to go forward, we won't have that critical infrastructure redundancy, and we would be subject to potential spills in the future. That concludes our staff comments. I would like to note that we have our whole team here today, including the commission's technical experts. We have Jeremy Smith, the commission's coastal engineer, who can address any questions regarding coastal hazards, as well as Dr. Janet Engle, the commission's staff ecologist. And with that, I'll, I'll just briefly turn to Dr. Hucklebridge, our executive director, just to ask if she has any additional comments before closing staff comment.
Yes, thank you. And thanks to the team. I just wanted to first echo Jen's gratitude to all the public that came out and shared their comments and concerns related to the project. We really carefully listened and considered all the written comments, as well as the public testimony that came in today. And, you know, have a lot of, I think, we carefully considered them. I think that the thing that this commission needs to remember is that our purview today is the coastal act. And we need to be thinking about impacts to coastal resources as required in the coastal act. And there were a lot of comments that, that a lot of questions and concerns raised that, that I agree are not coastal act concerns, however legitimate and concerning they may be. And, and I don't think we disagree there. But our purview here is to address the, the impacts under the coastal act. And as you heard from our team, I think we've done that in the staff report, but are interested in hearing the commission's feedback. And with, with that, turn it back to you, Chair Herman.
Thank you, Director Hucklebridge, and thank you to our staff and the applicant, and especially to the public for coming out and engaging. So I will turn it to my fellow commissioners for comments, questions. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Dr. Hucklebridge, for directing us to the issues that are directly within the purview of the coastal act. I wanted to direct staff's attention and maybe a follow-up to the testimony from the public members who were, who were concerned about both noise and particulate thresholds being reached. In particular, I was struck by the testimony of Kenya Lee, who talked about her two-unit apartment or two-unit building being impacted with children present and also with a potential loss of income related to the second unit on the site. And I will just, you know, to bring this back to the coastal act, I will just note that Venice has been a historic area of particular note with significant challenges around, both Venice and the city of Santa Monica, with significant challenges around eminent domain and property being taken from the historic African-American neighborhoods in the area, with the siting, with urban renewal programs on a federal and state level, with freeways crisscrossing through the neighborhoods and specifically targeted those who were most vulnerable, who also happened to be African-American. And so I would challenge the commission, commission staff to, in addition to the conditions that are set forth in the permit that require the city to work with the residents on some of these mitigation factors, including those related to particulate matter and noise and disruption, to take a step further to really consider the potential unintended consequences of some of the residents who have already historically borne the brunt of, of government and local policies that have had a negative impact on the community character of the neighborhoods, which is something that is within our purview as the coastal commission. But I feel very strongly about this. And so I, I think we really need to look at our coastal act authority under our environmental justice provisions, as well as those provisions around the neighborhood character, to think about, how do we have a more equal, fair, and just decision-making process, understanding that the infrastructure is needed. And this is something that cannot really be put on hold, as was explained by the representatives for the city.
Okay. I, I think I can, oh, sorry.
Please, go ahead.
In relation to the environmental justice issue raised, you know, we don't think this is an environmental justice issue. You know, we, we believe that, you know, supporting the equitable siting of necessary infrastructure, especially in areas with greater adaptive capacity, further, you know, prevents harm to historically marginalized communities. And then also, the city did mention that they are willing to work with the public, and they have several mitigation measures outlined in the EIR that they will, that they have proposed along with this application. In addition, you know, I, I think the city could maybe address some of these issues a little bit more clearly.
And thank you, Jen. I just wanted to add to that as well, that just building off what Jennifer just explained, this is not one of those disadvantaged communities. It is not flagged as such in Cal Matters or any, or in the, I'm sorry, the Cal screening criteria. This is one of the more upscale areas in Venice with larger structures. And as, as noted in our addendum, it's important that infrastructure be cited equally throughout different communities, including in more upscale communities. And so this is one of those cases where we believe that we've struck the right balance. This is located correctly, not only because this is the area where this plant, you know, these additional pumps must be located here for engineering reasons, but because this is an appropriate area based on balancing community character as well. And just as Jenna noted, it is our understanding the city, though, is addressing those issues, and it's appropriate for the city to do that. But I would recommend that we direct some of those questions on how they will specifically address those concerns to the city representatives that are here today.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Thank you. Through the chair, respectfully understood that perhaps this area is not currently marked by the Cal and Biros screen or other, or otherwise marked as an environmental justice community. However, if we do not take account of past and the, the way in which communities were configured prior to significant gentrification and significant changes to demographics, as an example, the city of Venice and Santa Monica in some areas potentially, you know, potentially several decades ago, or even, even earlier, would be marked as environmental justice communities and would be designated as such in the Cal and Biros screen, but because of changed circumstances, in part due to gentrification, displacement, some of which is, has been government sanctioned. I think we can't look at a snapshot initially, a snapshot in time that doesn't take those things into account. And so I respectfully disagree with staff's assessment as to this particular instance for those specific reasons. And I request that we get a little bit more granular on the recommendations to the city to ensure that fairness is, fairness is met out. Again, this is not in excess of our specific authority. I am citing to our environmental justice policies and also looking at the community character provisions within the coastal act to justify our further inquiry and further delineation of specific conditions for the city to be meeting.
Thank you. I'd invite a representative from the city, or Dr. Hucklebridge, looks like you want to respond.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Turnbull Sanders for those clarifications. I think we agree the history here of redlining, and there's a long history in LA and other cities up and down the coast of unfairness and environmental justice. So just wanted to thank, thank you for those clarifications. And I, I think I would want to see if the city has any thoughts on the, the question that you, you posed, Turnbull, sorry, Commissioner Turnbull Sanders, forgive me, on, on how the city might want to work with these residents. And I think we can consider what we can do as a commission, but I think that, I heard the city say that they were willing to do that. So maybe we can invite them up and see if they have any thoughts on that preliminarily, and then we can move from there.
That's great. Through the chair. So I think specifically, I'm most concerned about the particular site, and there may be other sites in the area that are similarly impacted, but particularly with the person who gave testimony, Kenya Lee, about both loss of rental income property, the excessive, both particulate matter and the noise thresholds being met. So even if construction is limited during daylight hours, that still doesn't necessarily solve the problem of the particulates and the noise thresholds. And so, looking at something that is fair for all parties to ensure that, again, not looking beyond the coastal commission's authority, but making sure that, that we are protecting the community character and also looking at our environmental justice provisions. So I guess the question on the city's representative part is, what is the city willing to do in terms of ensuring that the communities that are during the construction period are not disadvantaged?
Through the chair, Commissioner Turnbull Sanders. We appreciate your comments very much. And we also share your sensitivities in regards to our neighbors in regards to this particular issue. There has been a lot of information that's been provided to staff up to, and including some supplemental correspondence just in the last couple of days, which I believe is reflected in your addendum packet. Everything that can possibly be done in regards to mitigating dust and noise is being done. The piles will be installed with a vibration technique, as opposed to the old giant slamming them down into the ground. There is going to be best state-of-the-art dust and particulate management. There is a construction management plan and a traffic management plan, all of which the project is conditioned for and needs to be vetted with your staff. So, look, the reality is, and I think we all understand that this is a significant project, and it, it has to happen, but what is inherent on us is to make sure we do it in as sensitive a fashion as possible. And that's why we have minimized the size of the building, the height of the building, so that it's, it doesn't loom over the surrounding property owners, and that we have security, that we have proper staging, that we do everything humanly possible to both build the auxiliary pumping plant and minimize the impacts to the, to the neighbors, including and especially the immediate neighbor, Ms. Kenya Lee. And that is why also, in addition to that, the city will be meeting with Ms. Lee to find out whether or not there will be any damages to her property from the construction, and that there's recompense for that. So that's already been put into motion as well. And that being said, Commissioner, if there is anything else... if there is anything else that we can do to assuage your concerns and the concerns of the community, we'll do it. We'll do it. We have to build the auxiliary plant, but we will do anything. And your staff reports very comprehensive in regards to construction management, traffic management. We'll do whatever you direct us to do, just so long as we can proceed here.
Just through the chair one more time, and then I'll defer to my fellow commissioners. I guess, you know, in the law, there's something called the eggshell plaintiff. And in particular, I think Ms. Lee mentioned specific challenges with her family members and maybe having particular sensitivities. And so I think general mitigation is great to have, but I think looking into the specific needs and concerns of those family members, particularly in such close proximity, maybe different for other folks, but just highly recommend that of the city. And again, staying within the bounds of our jurisdiction as a coastal commission. But I think that is something, and it sounds like the city's representative is amenable to doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pressiata.
Yes. In one of my other lives, I served on San Diego's Metro Wastewater organization, and we have had significant incidents in the recent period as a result of weather, unpredictable weather, and challenges from unpredictable weather that have overwhelmed our pump station. So I'd like to commend the city for taking this proactive step. Sewer spills are no joke. Sewer spills create challenges for the fauna and the wildlife and everything else. And so I think I can join and look forward to seeing how we can support this project to get forward. Having said that, I am curious on more information I've never seen, or I don't know that this is a gated community, or how it's possible that a public parking lot can cause so much, so many challenges for a community. So I'm just interested in getting more information on the public parking lot. And I also want to associate myself with the comments offered by our commissioner colleague that spoke on behalf of the Lee family that's an adjoining property owner. And I appreciate the city of Los Angeles taking proactive steps to try to address mitigations that are reasonable within the context of building such a facility. But we're in the millions of dollars in fines from the Water Quality Control Board related to sewage spills caused by these weather incidents that were unforeseen. And I think it is critical that we find our way into supporting this project to move forward. So I guess the only question I have is, staff can explicate what is the huge concern with the parking lot? But does the parking lot meet the critical resources that we, as a commission, are responsible for monitoring? Because sometimes people can choose not to like public amenities that are critical for the state resource or from the state perspective. But I didn't see if this was a gated community that needed to be protected from having public access to public streets, public sidewalks, and public everything. So can somebody please share information with me about that?
Mr. Hudson, Ms. Doyle, would you like to respond?
Yes. So the area is not, the residential community is not a gated community. It is open to the public. The main issues raised by members of the public for the parking lot include that it'll be used by unhoused individuals that, you know, may cause noise issues or other issues for the residents in the community.
And I would just add to that, that this is an important area for public access because we have this public trail system that runs along both the canals, as well as those adjacent beach areas. And there is a dearth of public parking within the area. So we do believe it's an important resource.
I appreciate the response from staff. So at an appropriate time, I would like to support with a second anyone who makes the motion, because it looks complex to make such a motion. But I look forward to hearing from Commissioner Lopez.
Commissioner Lopez, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I want to just throw my full support behind the comments made by Commissioner Turnbull Sanders. I think the issues that were raised there were the ones at the very top of my mind after having the opportunity to meet with Ms. Kenya Lee and understanding the impacts. I too have a five-year-old who sounds sensitive, and so I can only imagine the concerns and the fears that are going through her mind and heart as she thinks about, you know, trying to put her children to bed and wake them up and all those challenges that come around a major construction site like this. And so, big picture, I understand the need for this facility, and I wholeheartedly support completing it. But I want to make sure that there are protections for her and her family, given the potential impacts that have been highlighted. And I agree with Commissioner Turnbull Sanders, I want to make sure that the, any mitigation we can put in place is within the purview of this commission. But as we look at what we're supposed to do, which is protect the resource, make sure infrastructure remains in place, and take care of private property rights, and their, to their own extent, I see this as somewhere in there. I don't know how to craft that motion. I'm still fairly new to this particular body. And I know that I would not feel right if we did not find a way to make sure that we have her concerns heard and felt before this project hits a point where we pass that point of no return. Inevitably, this project needs to get done. We've all heard about the desire from the state to push additional resources, or additional housing into resource-constrained neighborhoods and allow for more ADUs to be built in higher-impact areas. And all that means there will be more effluent through this particular pipe in the future, as we look at infill projects and higher density, which is a good thing for us in the big picture. But that means more has to go into, through this limited and very narrow channel, all that being understood, fully supporting the project, but wanting to make sure that we can allay the fears. And given the history, understanding the redlining, the real impacts that are happening in communities like this, again, housing being built here was not a place of luxury initially. We have to remember, there's an oil well just a few hundred feet away, right? This, these were communities intentionally pushed away. And so for those reasons, I'm looking for some guidance on how to make sure that, again, we hear a willingness, but making sure that there's protections that we can provide. And if we can't, a clear understanding of why we can't do that would be important to me today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders, did you want to respond to that?
Just a, you know, just bringing it back through the chair to the staff and looking at the special conditions that the staff have included, some of which are standard conditions and some of which are special conditions, and looking at, let's see, on, it looks like page 36 of the staff report where the special conditions start, and looking at the construction and pollution prevention plan, maybe a place to add some additional language as to particulate matter and/or noise mitigation. Separately, there may be some other place to put that kind of special condition into the, into the document. But I'm seeking staff support and request for addressing some of these issues while still remaining within our jurisdiction under the Coastal Act to ensure that we have covered all of our bases here.
I'll propose that we move, there's a couple of other commissioners with questions. So let's move to those questions, and we'll return to staff to address this momentarily. So first, Commissioner Nada.
Thank you. And I, as staff, looks at that to see what type of assurances we can get through the conditioning process. I just wanted to kind of remind us that this is a major project like this, and a setting like this is precisely the reason that the commission determined that this raises a significant issue, and why we are having a de novo hearing, so that we can actually craft the type of conditions that are necessary to respond to the specific circumstances of this proposal. And what I'm hearing generally from the, from the commenters that we've heard, is that there is a general agreement that a project like this needs to go forward. And certainly, my experience as looking at the pollution incidences along this stretch of coast, which are quite often, and they're, you know, surfers there routinely report respiratory distress and other things from water quality, from the sewer overflows onto the beach. So I think that, you know, clearly this is needed from an environmental and public health point of view. But I, and I think in terms of crafting the conditions that our staff worked with the applicant to achieve is that I trust that the alternative that was referenced several times in the public comment, those, that alternative approach has been taken into account and incorporated as staff and the applicants see fit. I don't know if you want to respond to that, Director Hudson, at all, and give some clarification. But that, the process of coming up with this proposed approval with conditions includes consideration of all those various concerns and incorporation of those as much as, you know, we can fit into the Coastal Act jurisdiction, I guess is the way to put it. So I just wanted, you know, if you want to make some comments about the process that you went through in terms of crafting these special conditions.
Mr. Hudson.
All right. Thank you. Yes, we worked with the city, and I'll let Jennifer walk through the details. But many of this includes not just our standard language, but close evaluation of this specific project to ensure that the water quality, air, you know, typical BMPs, best management practices are all in place. And as, as mentioned earlier, in our evaluation, we didn't believe that this qualified as environmental justice. But if the commission wished to make changes to these conditions, then we would need your guidance on that Chapter III basis. And that would be, that would be the recommended basis for you, would be to explain the environmental justice policy approach. And then we would just need the details regarding what additional changes are being requested for this, you know, for these conditions. And then I think we would want to ask the city today if they would agree to any of these changes.
It looks like our staff is conferring as we speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks. I'm not going to, it seems like there's a good amount of discussion around the impacts of construction on the neighbors. And so I'm not going to get into that. I actually want to talk about sort of a long-term impact that can, in neighborhoods. And that's around the transformers. And so I wanted to ask the city about the, about the operational expectations of the overflow facility versus the existing one. I would note that the existing facility has also a bank of transformers, but they are behind a very significant wall, like probably at least 12 feet tall, to protect both the environment and the neighborhood. And the new facility has no wall. And frankly, in many neighborhoods, you have transformers and vaults and those sort of things to protect the neighborhood from the ongoing, I don't think anyone's lived near a transformer of this size, but when it's on, it makes, it can be, it can be quite noisy and make this buzzing noise that can just really echo through a whole neighborhood. And so I just, and there's three of them in this case. And so I was kind of wondering, what is the, what is the, the design criteria and use profile that you would have for these transformers?
Through the chair, Commissioner Wilson. Really good observations. The development standards, the uniform building code, the utility standards have changed. And we did query in regards to our ability to, the city's spending millions of dollars to build this facility. We would gladly build a block wall or something around to shield the transformers. It's not just transformers, also switching boxes as well. And we would love to do it, but we have been told that we cannot do that, that we must maintain unfettered access directly off of the street. On other commercial and residential projects that I've worked on, I know that to be the case now. Similarly, in regards to putting them subterranean, I do have Christine here from the City Engineering Division, and she could speak to this if necessary. But I'm being told we also can't put them underground in this particular case. Now, again, I want to reassure you, we do it. We happily do anything that we can to address these concerns, these legitimate concerns of the, of the neighbors. But did you want to speak to this?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Christine Heinejostis. I'm also a representative from LA Sanitation and Environment. So regarding the transformers located along Canal Court, one of the changes that we did make back in the 2022 timeframe as a request from one of the residences, residences at the time, was to include a CMU block wall on the northern property line to also provide some dampening from noise that could happen from the transformer. In addition to that, prior to start of construction, and as soon as we have complete design drawings, one of our mitigation measures is to bring in an acoustical consultant as well to analyze the design and see if there's anything that we could be doing better from a noise perspective. But do know that in this project, we are, we are working to use the least noisy equipment that is feasible for our project.
And within the design that you have now is the orientations, sorry, you got to turn your mic off, the line's on. Okay, thanks. In the orientation, it's pretty, you know, it's just right in the neighborhood, as opposed to, you know, there's two other sides of this, of this structure where they may or may not be located, that you could have, you know, some sort of setbacks, or, I'm just saying, like, it seems, this seems to be the most obtrusive spot that they could possibly locate. And so I'm wondering if, if there is a potential for moving these away from the, from those potentially sensitive receptors? Because, like I said, the existing transformers you have for the existing facility are behind a fairly large, you know, they're, it's at least 12 feet tall, as far as I can tell. And so that's very protective of sound. And so these have nothing around them in the current, except for some bollards. And so where are we in that? And we didn't get to the first question, which is, what is the expected operational, like, how are these expected to be on 24/7 in terms of the transformers? Like, or do they switch on and off when there's the use of the facility?
So the anticipated uses is 24/7, because this is an ongoing sewage pumping plant that will continue to receive wastewater 24/7. So it will be running 24/7.
Then going back to the next question, or the one before, which is like, is there, is there a potential for accommodation in terms of moving them to, so that you can get them behind a wall, or taking up some of the space that you might have for some of your employee parking to do that? Or what, what opportunity is there on site to, to potentially mitigate for this 24/7 noise impact?
So we have looked into that during the design process. And unfortunately, the area that they're currently located is the best location. The reason being is where the employee parking is, is actually underneath that is our wet well. And so we cannot put transformers in that area, unfortunately, because it is a big sewage pit. On the hurricane side, we have existing utilities and our manifold that will connect and allow the wastewater that's being pumped into our Venice Steel Forest Main or Coastal Interceptor Sewer. So we've evaluated, you know, citing the building differently. But unfortunately, the orientation that we have right now is the best for the space that we have available to us. And that includes the transformers on Canal Court.
Sure.
Commissioner Wilson, a great engineering response as a planner. Let me break it down a little bit more. The anchor that you have on the geometry for this entire auxiliary pumping plant is the, what Christine referenced as the well. So you've got the diversion from the 60-inch main, which runs under Grand Canal. And that brings the 40 million gallons a day into what they call wells, essentially a giant concrete vault. And that, in the vault, are these 18, three 18 million gallons per day pumps. That's the heart and soul of it. And then there's a lid which is being placed over that. And that is where the three parking spaces are being picked up. We cannot put, pursuant to building code, we cannot put the transformers over that. Then located back behind that, towards the street, is the minimum-size building, now just a little over 2,000 square foot, that just a little over 2,000 square foot, that we have for all the electrical equipment, for the command center, the backup generator and such, which just leaves the, the little strip there where we are putting the transformers. We, we looked at it. It's literally the only place that we can put it.
I appreciate that. I'm just, this is kind of, for me, the sort of most long-term, and I mean, we're talking about the, the temporal impacts of construction and the displacement potentially for, in terms of neighbors and all that sort of stuff. But in terms of the long-term impact, aside from concerns around the parking, which I'm not going to address at this moment, this seems to me like the most impactful part of this. And so I guess to staff, that what I'm hearing from the city is that, is that they're going to do everything they can to minimize that. I don't know what that is necessarily from what I have in front of me right now, but is there a way that you got, that, that staff can be vigilant on this issue in terms of making sure that that is really the case? That, that whatever the, whatever engineering solutions or mitigations possible to minimize the long-term noise impacts from these transformers to the neighborhood? Would you guys make sure that that's prioritized in our ongoing review of this project?
Yes, we're trying to figure out exactly how to do that.
I'm sure we'll have a break at some point, and you can do that.
Any, okay, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, all the presenters. Thank you, Commissioner Turnbull Sanders, for your comments. I couldn't agree more. It is a concern, it was a concern, and there's, there's no doubt why this existing pump was put in place when it was put in place. I, I'm curious as to where the other pump stations are located that service the city of, of L.A. Certainly not within this discussion, but I am certainly curious. And are attempts, is there proposed pump stations for those old pump stations as well? That's sort of a rhetorical question, but I'd be curious to, to learn about that at some point. Understanding what is in within our purview, understanding the, the focus on community character in this residential neighborhood, what is the current parking lot situation? Is that an open parking lot for the public? Or is that a parking lot right now that's just for those who are servicing the existing pump station?
So the existing lot at 128 Hurricane Street is a vacant lot. There is no parking currently available on that site. The city recently purchased that site for the use of this project.
Okay, so it says parking lot, that is not actually a parking lot on the...
They're proposing a parking lot for that site.
That is where the proposed parking lot is going to go? Okay.
Correct.
And so, just to make sure I'm clear, the existing pump station will continue to operate in concert with the proposed pump station? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the proposed pump station location was zoned residential. Did I hear that correctly? Before it was rezoned to allow this potential proposed pump station?
Yeah, the current land use designation is residential. I'm not sure where the city's at in terms of changing the zoning designation.
And just, just to add one quick note, that is the, that was the problem, and that's why we agreed that this raised substantial issue, is the city has not yet changed the land use plan designation. So there is a special condition requiring the city to fulfill that process and to obtain a certified amendment to its land use plan to change the land use designation to allow for the project.
And I, and I certainly appreciate that. I, you know, from a neighborhood perspective, I think I'd be a little upset, to put it mildly, that, you know, I bought, I bought property with the existing pump station, probably with an expectation that that would be there, with the surrounding properties being zoned for residential. And then to find out, and particularly to Ms. Lee's property, that that residential is now going to be rezoned to put a pump station literally right on her property line with the transformers, with all the issues, you know, that's... Being upset is probably a mild expectation. And so I understand that, that may not be within our purview here. But I think it, it does impact the community character aspect of what is, what is within our purview. So it, it's almost, it's somewhat disconcerting because it's almost, you know, this, this project is a must-have, and I certainly understand that, and I'm not minimizing the need for this particular project. But it's almost a, to put it bluntly, too bad, too sad. We have to do what we have to do. We have to put it in this location, this location only. Noise be damned, impact be damned, you guys have to live with it. And that's certainly upsetting to me. I can only imagine what it's like for those who are on the ground floor, having to deal with this. Where does, question with regard to the effluent. So this services 220 households, is that this pump station? Is that roughly?
220,000, for the record, Don Schmitz.
Okay. And where does the rest of the, is that, because we talked about the West, West L.A. What does that mean? There are probably half a million people in West L.A. Where does, what does West L.A. mean to the city of L.A. and its affluent?
Through the chair, Commissioner Jackson. You heard in some of the previous testimony, the coastal interceptor, there's, the city has multiple pump stations. L.A. Sand serves 4 million people. And Hyperion, of course, is the plant. So this is the end for the coastal interceptor that comes all the way from the Pacific Palisades through Santa Monica and down to this low spot in Venice to be pumped up to the Hyperion plant. But there's a whole series of pump plants that the City Sanitation District, City Sanitation has. This is the largest, the existing one is the largest pump station. It's the critical low point in their system to get the effluent up to Hyperion.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
I just, thanks for that. I wanted to key off what you were just, where you were going, or where I thought you might get to, which was, we have a loss of two residential zoned lots in this process. Is it possible to vest those entitlements to the parking lot lot of this, and so that in the future, if the city wants to look at some affordable housing or some sort of housing in that space, that they would have that, that we vested in that? Or what is the zoning of the parking lot now?
The land use designation's also for residential.
It is for residential. Okay, so there's, but it has a density, right? I mean, has it, it has a density requirement to that residential? Okay.
Yes.
And what is that currently?
I would need to look for that information. I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, I was just thinking about, you know, in terms of like mitigating for the loss of two residential units, maybe vesting an additional two residential units to that lot? And then at the very least, we wouldn't have a reduction in residential units as part of this project? Is that, is that unreasonable?
So they need to do an LUP amendment currently in order to, to re-designate these? So are you saying that in the future, if you wanted to convert back from the parking to residential, are you trying to build something in now that would require?
Yes. Wouldn't require, would just vest the, the right to, to get the density that you've lost from those two residential units that you're removing?
I'm not sure how to do that. Let me think about it a bit. I don't know how you vest that interest now, but let me think about it.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to suggest we take a brief break to allow some coordination. So if we could all be back here at 1:10, is that enough time, Director? Okay, 1:10, please. Thank you. Okay, let's return to session, and I will perhaps go to Dr. Hucklebridge. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So we have a few proposed changes to make to our staff recommendation to some of the special conditions to address some of the concerns that have been raised by the commissioners. So the, I'll read them off, and if you want to look through, you know, which condition we're recommending a change to, or a new, or a new condition. So the first is Special Condition 1. We will be adding Subpart F, a new condition that says, in a, to add to the final plans, inclusion of long-term noise impact minimization measures to the maximum extent feasible. That's the first one. The second two changes are both to Special Condition 6, and that's for a construction, it's the construction plan. So the first is to Subpart B, which is to minimize discharge of construction pollutants. And we have just a couple of word additions here. So the first, I'll just read off the condition and note the additional word. The discharge of other pollutants resulting from construction activities such as, and here we're going to add the word dust, chemicals, paints, vehicle fluids, petroleum products, asphalt and cement compounds, debris and trash, close parentheses, into, and then we're going to add the word air, and continue, it says runoff or coastal waters shall be minimized through the use of appropriate BMPs. So that's the first change to Special Condition 6. The second is to Subpart D, which is managing construction phase BMPs. So here it reads, appropriate protocol shall be implemented to manage all construction phase BMPs, including installation and removal, ongoing operation, inspection, maintenance, and training to protect coastal water quality. And then here's the addition, and minimize noise impacts. So those are, we are going to be changing our staff recommendation to include those changes. Our understanding is that the city's in agreement with those changes. And with that, I'll turn it back to the chair for any additional discussion.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, the city was nodding their heads in agreement with our statements by Director Hucklebridge. Thank you. Okay, so I'll turn it back to my colleagues. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Just so I'm on the right motion, is this the motion and resolution with the de novo dual permits on page 34? Is that where, where we're at?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Correct.
Thank you. I move that the commission approve coastal development permit number A-5-VEN-22-0068 pursuant to the staff recommendation and including the modifications as delineated by our chair.
Second.
That's a motion by Commissioner Turnbull Sanders and a second by Commissioner Escalante. May we have a roll call vote, please?
And I recommend a yes vote. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Escalante. Commissioner Escalante.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Yes.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. The motion passes. Commissioner?
And I believe we have two more motions. With the second motion, I move that commission approve coastal development permit number A-5-VEN-22-0069 pursuant to the staff recommendation and with the amendments that the staff director included on the conditions, and I'm requesting a yes vote.
Commissioner Preciado, did you want a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turnbull Sanders, a second by Commissioner Preciado. They're asking for a yes vote. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Yes.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. The motion passes. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair Harmon. For the third and final motion, I move that the commission approve coastal development permit number 5-24-0123 pursuant to the staff recommendation and the modifications is provided by our staff director, and I'm requesting a yes vote.
Second.
Thank you. That's a motion by Commissioner Turnbull Sanders, a second by Commissioner Preciado. They're asking for a yes vote, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Yes.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you to the applicant, everyone who participated, and to the commissioners and staff for this thoughtful discussion and work. Okay, now we're going to break for lunch, and may I suggest that everyone be back here at 2:30? Is that sufficient? Thank you. We're on our own for lunch today, so please be back at 2:30. Okay, everyone, thank you. Hope you all had a nice lunch. We will get back to our calendar, and I think it brings us to item 13B.
Hey, thank you. That does bring us to item 13B. This item will be presented via Zoom by Dulce Cortez, a coastal program analyst in our South Coast District. We do have a PowerPoint, if we could pull that up, please. And Dulce, please take it away.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item 13B is a request by the City of Santa Monica and the Bay Foundation for a coastal development permit to implement Phase 3 of the Santa Monica Beach Dune Restoration Project. The project involves installation of approximately 35, 38.55 acres of new fore dune and back dune habitat along Santa Monica State Beach. This phase builds on the success of the prior 3.25 acre Phase 1 and 5 acre Phase 2 pilot projects and expands the restored dune system to cover nearly 19% of the city's sandy beach area. The applicants are proposing a passive living shoreline project to enhance dune habitat and natural beach resilience while maintaining public access and recreational opportunities. Next slide, please. As shown in this aerial photo, the project site spans Santa Monica State Beach within the city of Santa Monica. Phase 1, shown in yellow, is located in the northern restoration area, while Phase 2, shown in light green, is also located in the northern portion of the beach. Phase 3 is depicted in green and includes both northern and southern restoration areas extending from the city's northern boundary at Wilt Rogers State Beach to its southern boundary of, at Venice Beach. Phase 1 and 2 of the project were previously approved by the commission, and restoration of these areas has been completed. The Phase 3 portion of the project that is the subject of this application includes approximately 31.45 acres north of the Santa Monica Pier and 7.10 acres, acres to the south. Next slide, please. The project will use low-profile symbolic posting cable fencing, strategic hand seating, and container plantings of native dune vegetation to passively form dune hummocks. No sand impor or mechanized equipment is proposed. All symbolic posts and cable fencing will, will be no higher than 3 feet, and the seaward sides of the restoration areas will be, will remain unfenced and open for public use. Public access is preserved through designated 25-foot pedestrian corridors that will extend throughout the restoration areas, and the project design pulls back from the beach berms and recreational nodes... berms and recreational nodes to minimize disruption. As a living shoreline, the project is intended to enhance beach stability, buffer against sea level rise and storm surge, and restore ecological function to an urban beach. Next slide, please. The project has been designed to balance and, balance the preservation of public access and recreation with the creation of new dune habitat. Staff believes the project accomplishes this, this balance by preserving lateral and vertical public access through and across the site, minimizing visual impacts and avoiding sensitive recreational zones. While the project will occupy some sandy beach area, the public will still have full access to all areas outside the beach, outside the beach of the designated restoration areas.
Okay, I think Dulce is frozen, at least on our end. We'll wait for it to regain connection. Or Steve, if you want to go ahead.
I can, I can jump in while we wait for Dulce's camera to reset.
Dulce has dropped out of the meeting, so she might be reconnecting.
All right, I can, I can proceed. And if I could ask for which slide number we're on currently, I will pick it.
Slide 4.
Cue.
Dulce actually just came back, so we see her.
Oh, hi, sorry. Okay, start over, side floor.
We lost you, we're still on slide 4.
Okay. The project has been designed to balance the preservation of public access and recreation with the creation of new den hap, dune habitat. Staff believes the project accomplishes this balance by preserving lateral and vertical public access through and across the site.
Okay, yeah, we lost connection again.
Yeah, Steve, I think you're going to need to take over.
I'll, I'll take over and Dulce will still be here to help answer questions, so thank you Dulce. All right, starting from slide 4, the project has been designed to balance the preservation of public access and recreation with the creation of new dune habitat, and we do believe the project accomplishes this balance by preserving lateral and vertical public access through and across the site, minimizing visual impacts and avoiding sensitive recreational zones. Now while the project will occupy some sandy beach area, the public will still have full access to all areas outside the beach, outside of the designated restoration areas, and the public's ability to access the beach to and along this part of the coast will be maintained at all times, and that includes the ocean and the sandy shore between the dunes and the mean high tide line. Now the project site is highly accessible to environmental justice communities and is located within walking or transit distance of disadvantaged neighborhoods. To strengthen equitable access, we have a Special Condition 3, which requires educational signage with QR codes that will be provided in multiple languages, including Spanish and English, and at least one infographic display will be installed near the pier to explain the project's goals. Next slide, please. Special Condition 3 requires a detailed dune habitat creation plan. This includes a native plant palette refined by Commission ecologists, the use of site-appropriate seeds and placement of driftwood that excludes burned or hazardous material to protect marine resources. Temporary sand fencing and planting will be used to facilitate dune formation without mechanized grading. Ongoing maintenance measures are also required. Monitoring data from Phases 1 and 2 show the restored dune, enhanced beach aesthetics, increased biodiversity and improved resilience. And this third phase will build on that success and represents a scalable model of nature-based shoreline protection that I would just add, we hope will be repeated in other coastal communities. And our staff has received several letters from members of the public after the staff report was prepared, expressing concerns about this project. And they noted concerns ranging from potential fire risk, crime, garbage accumulation, habitat-related pests and public access, concerns about public access impacts. In response, Commission staff has addressed these issues, both in the staff report and additional information has been provided to the applicants, provided by the applicants, and we have responded to the concerned parties. The staff report explains that the fire risk is not expected to increase due to the careful placement and management of driftwood, along with the use of low-line fire-resistant native vegetation. This project would not create conditions that would encourage illegal camping or increase crime, as the restored dunes consist of sparse vegetation and will remain low in height. Concerns regarding potential litter are addressed through coordination with L.A. County beaches and harbors, which has reported no complaints related to trash during implementation of the earlier Phases 1 and 2. And to further support public access, Phase 3 includes even wider strategically plat, placed pathways that will be designed to accommodate families, seniors and other beachgoers. Moreover, larger areas of sandy beach are maintained for public access and recreation, both seaward and landward between the restoration areas. And I would just note that like Phases 1 and 2, we will maintain public access on all sides of these restoration areas, so between the restoration areas and the water, landward of these areas, and to and around. Finally, because the project site is located on state tidelands leased to the city of Santa Monica, the city has coordinated with California State Parks, the acting agency for the state, to ensure that the dune restoration activities are consistent with the terms of the lease and the allowed use of the property. State Parks' review and approval prior to commencement of alterations provides an additional safeguard that the project aligns with state requirements while advancing habitat restoration goals. Overall, the project is designed to enhance coastal habitat while maintaining shoreline access and continuing to serve environmental justice communities. Next slide, please. In response to concerns about visual impacts, the staff report notes that the low dune profiles and sparse vegetation used in Phases 1 and 2 have proven to integrate well with the beach setting as seen in these photos. While private views are not protected under the Coastal Act or the city's certified LCP, public views are considered and staff has found the project consistent with the relative, relevant visual resource policies. The project will not preclude any permitted beach events, as it was developed in coordination with the city of Santa Monica to ensure spaces for continued recreational and event use. Next slide, please. In closing, staff believes that the proposed project has been designed to avoid significant adverse effects to public access, marine resources, sea inequality, and it provides important climate resilience and habitat benefits, and as conditioned, will be consistent with all Chapter 3 policies of the Coastal Act, and thus, we're recommending the Commission approve this project, subject to the special conditions listed on pages 6 through 9 of your reports. The motion to approve this project can be found on page 5 of that report. This concludes staff's presentation, I would just note that we are available for questions.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Okay, are there any ex parte's on this matter? All right, seeing none, then we will open the public hearing, and we will begin with the applicant.
And yes, we have Tom Ford here in person.
How much time do you need, sir?
Five minutes would be great, and if I could maybe retain two or three minutes for rebuttal if necessary.
Absolutely, thank you.
Fantastic.
Five minutes on the clock, please.
All right, thank you Commissioners, very excited to be here today. This is my first time going through this process, so if I omit something, please correct me. But nonetheless, you know, the purpose of the project, I think, was very well outlined in the staff report that was presented by Dulce and Steve. Would also note that we've put in a number of these projects, stemming from Manhattan Beach, another project in Dockweiler Beach, the two, and perhaps third in Santa Monica, and then up off of Zuma and Westward Beach, and in all cases, they've just been wonderfully embraced. Years of environmental work and creating habitats and restoring habitats, I don't think I've found one that had as many positive common aspects to it and the way it's been received by the public. That said, really can't go further without thanking the hundreds of volunteers that contributed thousands of hours to this effort that you just saw outlined. Can't wait to see how many hundreds and thousands more we can engage moving forward to this next scale of this project. Have to thank the city of Santa Monica for their leadership. They were, you know, on the ground, working with us as many as 15 years ago when we started planning that initial pilot phase, which is still sitting there and looking and functioning fantastic 10 years later. So thank you to them. The, the Commission staff, the coastal conservancy staff and state parks also all played a very key role in helping us inform our processes, our approaches, asking great questions for us to help clarify exactly what we're trying to get done out there. And what I'd want to include is I think we got a few letters of support that came in later than made it into your packet, notably from Senator Ben Allen's office, from L.A. County Supervisor Lindsey Horvath, and from another organization with, called the Black Surface Collective, that does outreach, getting folks to the beach and getting them in the water to enjoy that full coastal experience that I know we all value so highly. So, thanks to them for leaning in, and I suppose it'll be all part of the file once, once this concludes. And I'm, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and to let you know that the Bay Foundation's thrilled with the staff report, all those four special, those conditions, we agree with fully, and I think we can meet all of those and look forward to doing so. And then perhaps quickly, what doesn't show up on the page, and what I've had the opportunity to experience repeatedly over the past 10 years doing this work. Folks come down to the beach in L.A., millions of them every year, and I'd like to say that this was kids, but it was also adults, and they go, "I'm sorry, you can have plants on a beach?" I go, "Yep." "You can have flowers on a beach?" "Yes." "Oh my God, are those butterflies on a beach?" And as much as the conservation values of these projects, you know, speak to my interests as an ecologist and hone in on one aspect of our strategic plan and our goals and our mission at the Bay Foundation, the other part is certainly serving the people of our community. And to widen their experience and their imagination to understand that a beach can look like that, and to know that a beach that looks like that and functions like these do is giving them a beach that will be there throughout their lifespans is plenty for me. And as for the public access, because we, we struggle with this sometimes with, with my staff, they're like, "Oh my gosh, those kids are in there, they're going to disturb the birds." I'm like, "Those kids are building a fort and chasing each other around with some rack that piled up there," and I, perhaps as a parent, couldn't be more delighted to see all that going down. So thank you for your time and your consideration today, and if this goes through, we just can't wait to get to work.
Thank you very much. Okay, Chris.
Okay, we have a total of 12 speakers sign to speak for this item. We have two in person, we'll start with Mitch Silverstein, followed by Don Schmitz.
Awesome. Chair Harmon and Commissioners, Mitch Silverstein, California Policy Senior Coordinator for Surf Rider Foundation. On behalf of Surf Rider and especially our 4,000 L.A. chapter members, please vote to approve the city of Santa Monica's Living Shoreline Project as conditioned. Surf Rider strongly supports proactive sea level rise planning that uses nature-based solutions to protect our beaches. Building on the Bay Foundation's successful pilot dunes nearby, this project will deliver multiple benefits for L.A.'s most popular beach. Like the present, presentation said, dunes are nature's way of retaining sand on the beach. It'll literally bring, you know, and as the dunes mature, they'll protect infrastructure from coastal flooding as well. So this will make L.A.'s biggest, most popular beach more resilient to sea level rise. There's also, dunes have a really rare native coastal habitat value, so it'll literally bring new life to the beach that includes pretty flowers, cute birds, and lots of colorful butterflies as well. It'll enhance the beauty of a very urban beach, which really needs that. Also, the restored dunes offer really great opportunities for the city, the Bay Foundation, Surf Rider L.A. and others to connect the greater L.A. community with nature. This habitat's going to offer amazing educational and volunteer stewardship potential. Also, I'd like to thank the South Coast Commission staff for working with the applicant to really make this project much better than it already was in terms of preserving public access, which is going to be unrestricted. You know, we're just, Surf Rider, you know, beach access is core to our mission, so if this project was negatively affecting access, I would not be here today speaking in support. So I really looked closely at this, and I believe beach access is completely protected. And then lastly, you know, this is an adaptive thing, you know, there's, I know that there's some concerns about it, but this is not destructive shoreline armoring. If in five years there's some issues or it's not performing as expected, it's so easy to adapt dunes, you can just change them. So on that, please approve this project, thank you.
Thank you. Don Schmitz, and then our first Zoom speakers will be Matthew Benton, A. Eugenia Urmacora, and Paul Schneider. Don Schmitz, go ahead.
Commissioners, Don Schmitz, on behalf of myself, I'm not here representing the applicant on this particular item today. It's been my honor and pleasure to participate in the working group with the League of Cities and the Coastal Commission. I've also hosted a number of seminars and symposiums on sea level rise, and we've talked about all the different options and the tools that we have in the toolbox, and some of them are very soft, but it's a, it's a, it's a gradations, graded scale. So you have beach nourishment, and then you have sand dunes on the beach nourishment. Not good for withstanding wave attack, but it holds the beach in place. And then you start looking at things such as artificial headlands and artificial reefs. So this is a great interim step, because fluvial erosion or wave erosion is not the only thing that takes our beaches away. You get, you get wind which carries the, the sand away as well. And of course, the habitat values are, it's incontrovertible, that's a really excellent thing for us to get. I, as the previous speaker mentioned, I wouldn't be in support of it if I thought it was in contradiction to access, and that's very often a problem with some of these things. But I think that both the applicant and the staff have done an admirable job to make sure that this critical recreational beach will not have its access opportunities degraded. So I know it takes a lot of time, I know it takes a lot of work, I know it takes a lot of money, and so I thought it were the, it important that I step up and be counted and support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to Zoom, Matthew Benton, A. Eugenia Urmacora, and Paul Schneider. Matt Benton, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Benton, and I'm serving as the Coast and Climate Program Lead for Surf Rider Los Angeles. I'm here to support a yes vote for item TH13B, Santa Monica's Living Shorelines Project, in line with the staff's recommendation. I have been incredibly grateful to have traveled to many beaches along our great coastline in California and have firsthand seen the positive impacts of sand dunes along the coast. Sand dunes are not only an incredibly beautiful feature on a beach, they are a critical habitat for native plants and birds, as well as a critical protection from storm surges, coastal erosion and sea level rise. L.A. beaches have undergone a lot of transformation over the last century. For example, the beaches at Santa Monica and Venice, 100 years ago were approximately 75 to 100 feet wide, but now feature over 500 feet of sand that covers sections that have been radically transformed over the last century. A lot of the sand has been dumped from sand dunes along the coast, and in order to accommodate greater tourism and greater attention. So now we have this opportunity, which the Bay Foundation has, has gifted us, to really restore this beach in a beneficial way for decades to come. I appreciate the, the Bay Foundation's past successes to rewild our L.A. beaches with their dune test plots, and I'm excited for this project to continue the efforts of creating protections for both the people in our city and our native species. I appreciate the Commission's time and opportunity to speak on the matter, and I encourage you to vote yes on TH13B pursuant to staff's recommendations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, A., excuse me, A. Eugenia Urmacora, Paul Schneider, and then Tim Noonan. A. Eugenia?
Yes, good afternoon Chair, Commissioners and staff. My name is Eugenia Urmacora, and I serve as a Los Angeles chapter manager for the Surf Rider Foundation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of item TH13B, the Santa Monica Living Shorelines Project, Phase 3. Living Shorelines Project, Phase Three. As Mitch and Matt has mentioned, this project is exactly the kind of nature-based solution Surf Rider supports on our coasts, and it's very much needed. By restoring dunes along the Santa Monica Beach, we create nature protection from sea level rise and erosion while keeping the iconic shorelines open and accessible to all people. Santa Monica has been a leader in climate action, and this project delivers directly on its climate action and adaptation plans. Since 2016, the Bay Foundation pilot dunes projects have shown that dune retains sand, reduces flooding, and supports native plants and wildlife. Unlike seawalls and other hard infrastructures, dunes are living systems. They adapt, they grow, and they can be adjusted without permanent harm to our coastlines. So the benefit goes beyond resilience. Dune restores habitats for birds, pollinators, and native plants in one of our most urbanized stretches of the coast, and I see it myself during beach cleanups, collaborations that we have with the Bay Foundation previously, where we saw, like, pollinators coming back to the area. They also enhance the beach experience, reminding us that this is not just recreational space, but living ecosystems. Importantly, these projects maintain full public access. Parking, volleyball courts, and pathways remain open. So this project offers a favorable protective model on how Los Angeles, California can adapt while protecting both. So, on behalf of Surf Rider Foundation, I respectfully urge you to approve with staff's recommendation and vote yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Paul Schneider, Tim Noonan, Ashley Olson, Paul Schneider.
Hi, everybody. Just wanna make sure you guys can hear me.
I guess we can hear you.
So I wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to come here today. What I wanna do is urge you all to vote no on this absolutely horrible idea, and I'll be very strict to tell you why. I've lived in Santa Monica for 14 years. I live on the beach, and I see exactly what happens to the beaches in front of my house every single day. I have tens of thousands of hours of video footage of the cameras pointing to the beach. And even though the applicant and Surf Rider Foundation will tell you the beautiful plants and birds and butterflies in these picturesque, short of bullshit statements that are just not real, unfortunately, take a walk down to Dock Weiler Beach where we talk about the plants and the birds and the butterflies, and you'll see exactly the opposite. It's homeless encampment next to trash pile, next to plastic bottles with nobody maintaining it and nobody taking care of it. Go on social media or anywhere you want and type in Dock Weiler Beach, you will see the videos that I'm telling you about. Or take a second to stop reading from a piece of paper and go see what these sand dunes actually look like. They're full of tens of thousands of pieces of trash that nobody is maintaining or taking care of. There are no butterflies, there's homeless encampments and garbage. If you look at how this pilot was tested on Phase One, it was done away from people in an area without residents and without 10 million tourists. This dynamic changes dramatically when you put it next to the Santa Monica Pier that has over 10 million tourists every single year. There's no valuable testing showing that restoring, which is another key word, we keep referring to restoring sand dunes. The Santa Monica beaches to the right and left of the Santa Monica Pier were man-made. There was never intended to be any sand dunes on any of these areas, and for good reason. When you look outside my house every single morning and see 50 to 100 homeless encampments and people sleeping on the beach, riddled with trash that is not maintained now, and you take that into account with residents, tourists, and everybody else, putting trash dunes around the Santa Monica Pier is a huge mistake. If you wanna vote yes on this, then please, I urge you to move it at least 600 feet away from the Santa Monica Pier. I agree with sand dunes, I think they're a great idea if they're maintained, but putting them close to the pier is gonna be a nightmare for you and a waiting lawsuit.
Thank you. Next is Tim Noonan, Ashley Olson, and then Amani Spielman. Tim Noonan.
Before my time begins, could you pull up Slide 7 from Steve Hudson's deck, please?
Yes, give us a moment.
Just wanna enlarge that area that's proposed so they can see it. Just blow that up a little bit, that'd be great.
Please continue, sir.
I'll begin. Esteemed Commissioners, as a resident and homeowner along Palisades Beach Road, I've been tracking with great, great excitement the first two phases of this project. But then our community changed with the Palisades fire. What many thought to be impossible has become the new normal. I am now very concerned about the practical nature surrounding the maintenance of the restoration areas, and therefore am currently opposed for the following reasons. The grass and fauna will create a dangerous fire hazard for residents, as these areas are closer to the homes than the shoreline as in the first phases. The homeless encampments, which already are a prime source of fires, will make this hazard even more relevant. With coastal winds and climate change, one would hope that the Palisades fire has taught us a few lessons. A simple fact from the CAL FIRE website is, areas within 200 feet of structures, the grass must be cut to three inches in height. Native brush shall be reduced in quantity to three inches in height. This does not apply to individual native shrubs spaced a minimum of 18 feet apart, provided such shrubs are trimmed up from the ground to one-third their height with all dead material being removed. That is the CAL FIRE website. The trash that is currently combed daily along the proposed Phase Three will instead soon rest in large amounts within the dunes and become an eyesore and increase the fire hazard. The homeless population who are already illegally camped in newly designated areas will surely increase due to the shield that the area will provide from wind. The resistance from residents and businesses on this project is not a discredit to climate change or environmental concerns, rather it is one practicality and resources. Under the State Operating Agreement of the State Beach, the City of Santa Monica is doing clean and maintain the beach area. This requirement can't be outsourced to a nonprofit volunteer group that does not have the budget or staff to maintain the dunes. The City of Santa Monica Coastal Commission believes this project should continue. I would think they would be moving the dunes 200 feet away from the homes and businesses by essentially moving them closer to the water. This would protect us from fire risk. I'd like to note that the pending item has a provision that will hold the California Coastal Commission harmless from any damage this item causes. Not sure how that responsibility's shifting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
... to assume such liability makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ashley Olson, Amani Spielman, and then Cameron Montesanto. Ashley Olson.
Hi. I'm a conservation biologist and a member of the Environmental Commission for the City of Santa Monica. But for today, my most important role is I'm a resident of Palisades Beach Road, directly impacted by Phase Three of the sand dune expansion project. I strongly support this project because it directly addresses the loss of biodiversity caused by decades of coastal alteration. Nearly every inch of our shoreline has been reshaved by human activity and stripped of the natural features that once supported thriving ecosystems. Expanding the dunes gives us a chance to bring back what we have lost. Native dune plants stabilize the sand and provide food and shelter for insects, pollinators, and shorebirds. Restored dunes can create critical nesting and foraging habitat for species that have been pushed to the brink by coastal development, such as the western snowy plover. Equally important, this project will help shift public perceptions of what a beach should be. For too long, people have been conditioned to think that our beaches are flat and raped in artificial landscape. By restoring dunes, we teach residents and visitors to value the beach in its natural form as a living diverse ecosystem, rather than an engineered backdrop for recreation alone. This project represents a chance to repair ecological damage, improve biodiversity, and change how we connect with our coastline. I urge the Commission to support this expansion, not only as a climate adaptation measure, but as a moral responsibility to restore and protect the coastal ecosystems we have nearly erased. Lastly, I understand that our community is very shaken by the Palisades fire, and I know my neighbors carry deep concerns about the increased fire risk. However, suggestions that the dune poses a fire hazard are simply not credible. Coastal dune habitats consist primarily of low-growing, salt-tolerant native plants with high moisture content that do not behave like fire-prone dry brush. To equate dune vegetation with inland wildfire fuels is to ignore the ecological science of coastal systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Amani Spielman and Cameron Montesanto. Amani Spielman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for having me. I'm a 30-year resident of Santa Monica, 60-year of Los Angeles, and I absolutely love the Santa Monica Beach the way it is for many reasons. But number one, I agree with the previous statements that it is going to be a huge homeless magnet, and it is gonna increase problems and safety. I understand the environmental concerns in wanting to salvage the sand and what have you, but in this case, I think it's just the wrong timing. My kids have, the three kids, privilege of doing junior lifeguards at the beach where you plan on putting this, and I know that this is gonna compromise a lot of our wonderful beach activities for our residents and those who come from other underserved areas. It is a fire hazard in that the homeless often create fires. Sad but true. And Will Rogers currently is a disaster and has some ecological problems and needs cleanup and repair. I would just plead with you to consider taking that funding and tabling this for now and focusing on the real issue with Will Rogers right there that has some actual environmental challenges and safety challenges. So all in all, I feel this is really dangerous, and as the previous residents have said, we've seen it in practice in Playa del Rey. I've been there and I understand what they're saying. And I think that maybe we could table this for now and prioritize our funding. LA is, has a real challenge with our funding right now, so we have to be practical with the fire. The Palisades residents need our beaches too. So it's gonna reduce the amount of beaches, it's gonna reduce the amount of area we have to entertain for the Olympics, and that's where we need help viscerally as well. Thank you for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cameron Montesanto, and then I will start calling names that we aren't able to find. Cameron Montesanto. And you should be able to unmute. I see that your camera's on. There you go.
Thank you. Hi. I would just like to say that I would encourage the voting of yes on this measure. I've lived in different places, and I've seen the way that dunes can change a landscape, and I admire how they teach people that this is not a dead ecosystem, this is not somewhere that is lifeless, this is a place with so much nutrients and availability for life to grow, and I think that changing people's understanding around that is very important, not to mention the economic value of maintaining a beach through natural systems like duning ultimately will return for many years to come. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And then we had three names that we weren't able to find. Stephen Kelly or Stefan Kelly, Jonathan Brandler, and Lauren Bash. If you've heard your name, please raise your hand. Stephen Kelly, Jonathan Brandler, or Lauren Bash. I do see Paul Schneider is raising his hand, maybe there's someone with him? I'm allowing you to unmute. And Paul, is either Stephen Kelly, Jonathan Brandler, or Lauren Bash with you?
I was actually trying to reach out to John Brandler, he's legal counsel that wanted to speak, but I'm unable to reach him. I'll try one more time.
Okay, thank you. And besides that, I haven't seen no hands raised, so. Matt, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Gonna assume that we weren't able to reach that last person. Okay, thank you. Well then, I will return to the applicant. I think he had asked for three minutes to respond to public comment. Sir?
Thank you. And just a couple, maybe qualifiers. We've certainly seen some tremendous conservation values. That, I believe that's a Type 42 grinder.
We're gonna go check on it.
Sorry, everybody, everybody at home's like, "What is he doing?" All right. Thank you. So, we have seen some really fantastic response amongst these sites to the return of rare, threatened, and sometimes endangered wildlife to our coastline, so that's very encouraging indeed. And no butterflies, thousands of endangered El Segundo blue butterflies returning to the beach in Manhattan Beach, which we encourage everybody to go down there at the right time of year so they can see that. They're relatively short-lived, they're about this big, and they're beautiful and blue, and love seeing them flit about. Certainly, we are sensitive and aware of many of the existing issues on Santa Monica Beach. It's a highly urbanized beach, there's a lot of uses down there, and it is our assertion that our project has not worsened any of those existing practices and continue to work with the City of Santa Monica to do the best, as well as others and agencies in the region, to improve the condition and functionality of our beach. And I wanted to... Oh, and then the other one. It was mentioned briefly, I think, in the staff presentation, that we've avoided the beach volleyball courts, we're working with all those existing uses, and that's also with any other permitted sites on the beach for a wedding party or a big party or the junior guards program. So we've done our best to position all of these things around those so those existing uses can persist. And that's what I know I'm gonna share. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing and return to staff. Mr. Hudson, if you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you. I would like to respond to a few of the points by some of the opponents, and basically that we have responded in great detail in the staff report to these assertions that dune restoration projects such as this one might result in increased instances of crime, homelessness, fire hazard, or pests, or garbage on a site. And in our experience, we have found these claims to be false, that there's no evidence that this is the case. We do have experience with many of these sorts of restoration projects in the past, including on this very beach with Phase One and Phase Two, which included exactly this sort of restoration of other similar dune areas. And the city and the applicant have confirmed that we have not experienced these sorts of issues. Now, particularly, as noted in the staff report, we have not seen any increase in fire hazard. These are sandy beaches, and dune restoration projects involve sparse vegetation, so this is not a verdict grassland, but it's sparse native dune vegetation within the sand. The woody debris is natural wood that might wash up on the beach, and it does not present any sort of increased fire hazard for these homes that might be located several hundred feet landward. In terms of garbage, these issues are manageable by the city, and they manage garbage and crime in all other areas of the beach, and that will continue to be the case here. So, we do not agree with any of those assertions, and I would note that it's important that those sorts of assertions without evidence should not be used to prevent these sorts of good dune restoration projects from going forward, or habitat restoration in general. In this case, I would note that this is unique in that the City of Santa Monica has developed a partnership with the Bay Foundation, which is something that we'd like to see more of going forward. What we have had as an issue, and we've seen opposition from neighbors in regard to other dune restoration projects, is a desire by residents typically to see what they consider to be a clean beach, and that is maintenance of continued beach grooming, and we have a history of that in Santa Monica. This project is unique, though, in that the city is proposing to modify their beach grooming practices to set aside certain limited areas for this dune restoration. And I appreciate that partnership that the city and the Bay Foundation have formed here, and we're looking to hopefully use this as a model in other areas. So we do believe that these issues have all been thoroughly addressed and vetted in the staff report, but I would note that we are available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So I will return to the commission and ask if any of my colleagues have comments, questions, motion? questions, motion. Commissioner Nada.
I, I, overall, I just want to say it's great to see this type of soft approach to coastal erosion concerns. I do want to just express sensitivity to people's concern about fire. This is, you know, a traumatized area that has, you know, gone through a lot. And I want to, I feel reassured from our staff that they've taken every precaution they can to, and have not really had any experience that this type of restoration has contributed to any wild, increased wildfire risk. So I'm ready to make a motion when the time is right.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Yeah, just one question. The barriers, as they were presented, right, are rope on steel? How long do you imagine those being up? I mean, are those forever? And if so, who's in charge of maintaining? Because I know that rope wears over time. So I'm just wondering longevity here, replacement time, what's that look like?
All right. That, yes, the idea is that that's, that post and cable type fencing would be maintained for the life of the development. We would have them come back and continue to monitor and evaluate this project over time. But it is intended for now for the life of the development.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all the speakers today. I am fortunate to be a neighbor of Manhattan Beach and have seen firsthand the benefits of the restoration that has taken place in that city. And it is, I often look with envy as, and I've scratched my head a couple of times and hey, maybe this is something that we can look at in Hermosa Beach. But I am a fan of what you all are doing, appreciate all the efforts. And you're right, the, it's amazing to see the number of volunteers out there giving of their time on weekends and late nights to, to make a difference. So thank you to all who are truly making a difference to provide some stability and sustainability in our, in our beautiful coastline beaches.
Thank you. Commissioner Nada, or Commissioner Jackson, whoever. If you have it ready, Commissioner Nada.
All right, with that, if there's, I move that the commission approve Coastal Development Permit Number 5-24-0853 pursuant to the staff recommendation and requesting a yes vote.
Second.
That is a motion by Commissioner Nada, a second by Commissioner Jackson. They're asking for a yes vote, and if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders. Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Great. Thank you very much. The permit is approved. Okay, now we are moving on to Item 14, the Deputy Director's Report for the South Coast District, please.
Thank you, Chair Harmon. Good afternoon, everybody. Item 14 is the Deputy Director's Report for South Coast District, Orange County. We're reporting two waivers for projects in Laguna Beach and San Clemente and one CDP amendment related to the Orange County Transportation Authority's debris containment wall along the railroad in San Clemente near the Mariposa Access Point. We aren't aware of any opposition to these items. So we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the waivers or the amendment in the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwing. Are there any ex parte's? Seeing none, any public speakers on the DDR?
I know. We just have one available for questions.
Thank you. Do three or more commissioners object to any item in the Deputy Director's Report? Seeing no objections, the commission concurse. We are now on Item 15A, please.
Great, thank you. And Emily Greer, our lead analyst on this project, is going to do the staff presentation. Go ahead, Emily, as soon as you're ready. Thanks.
Thanks, Carl. Good afternoon, commissioners. Item 15A is an appeal of a coastal development permit that was approved by the City of Huntington Beach for the construction of 10 new, three-story, single-family residences at 1802 to 1820 Pacific Coast Highway in Huntington Beach. The applicant is 1810 PCH HB LLC, and the appellant is John Mahood. Next slide, please. Subject site is located at 1802 to 1820 Pacific Coast Highway in the City of Huntington Beach. Although Pacific Coast Highway in this area is the first public road paralleling the sea, the subject site is located on the inland side of Pacific Coast Highway, and therefore, it is not located between the sea and the first public road. The site falls within District 4 of the Downtown Specific Plan, which is part of the city's certified implementation plan. The subject site is surrounded by residential development. Next slide, please. As seen on this slide, the locally approved project includes the construction of 10 single-family residences across 10 vacant lots. The three-to-four-bedroom homes range between approximately 3,400 square feet to 4,000 square feet in size, with attached two-to-three-car garages at a height of up to 35 feet. Four of the lots include ground-floor accessory dwelling units ranging from approximately 400 square feet to 450 square feet in size. All residences are designed with upper-level balconies and rooftop decks, which include approximately 9.75-foot-tall roof access structures. All vehicular access to the homes is located in the alley at the inland side of the site. Therefore, no public on-street parking spaces will be lost. Next slide, please. The primary grounds for the appeal raised by the appellant is that the approved development is inconsistent with the character of the community. The appellant also contends that the city's noticing was misleading. However, this is not valid grounds for an appeal. The appellant contends that the proposed project is not compatible with the proportions, scale, and character of the surrounding neighborhood. The appellant alleges the roof access structures are a fourth story, which is inconsistent with the character of the area, and believes they're an abuse of the ordinance, which allows for a 10-foot height projection beyond the allowable height of 35 feet. The development as proposed is consistent with the development standards of the Downtown Specific Plan, including height and allowable height projections, setbacks, landscaping, and parking. Additionally, the development is consistent with the pattern of development along Pacific Coast Highway in District 4, which generally consists of three-story, approximately 35-foot-tall single-family residences on narrow lots, such as the ones approved by the city in the subject proposal. The image on this slide shows the stretch of residences one block south of the subject site. Additionally, the Downtown Specific Plan includes a definition of the term "story", which explicitly states that a covered roof access structure should not be counted as a story. Therefore, these 10 single-family residences would be considered three stories and would be consistent with the surrounding three-story residential structures. Therefore, the project would have no impact on the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. The standard of review for the subject appeal is whether this, is whether a substantial issue is raised regarding conformance with the City of Huntington Beach's certified LCP and the public access policies of the Coastal Act with respect to the grounds raised by the appellant. In this case, the city's decision to approve the proposed project does not present any inconsistencies with the certified LCP with respect to community character. Additionally, the locally approved project does not result in any adverse impact on coastal resources, such as public access and public use. Furthermore, the project does not raise any coastal issues of statewide or regional concern. Next slide, please. Staff therefore recommends that the commission find no substantial issue with regard to the contentions on which the appeal has been filed. The motion and resolution can be found on Page 4 of the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Are there any ex parte's on this item? No? Okay. Then we will open the public hearing and begin with the appellant.
We do not have the appellant sign up to speak for this item, and I do not see them online either.
Okay. Then we'll move to the applicant.
And then the applicant is Grant Keen. They are on Zoom. We are moving them in right now. Let's give it a moment.
And Madam Chair, just for the record, we did reach out today to the appellant, but didn't receive a response, so we did make that effort. Just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schwing.
Hello.
And Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was just having some technical difficulties here. But yeah, thank you to staff. Thank you to Emily and leading that effort. And thank you to all the commissioners for your time today. I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm very happy with the process. And it's nice to see that when we design a project that is 100% per the LCP standards, all zoning standards, parameters, et cetera, that as a developer, when we have a set of standards and a goalpost and we adhere to them, that we can go through this process and also see, you know, staff and hopefully commissions approval. So thank you all, and I support the staff's no substantial issue decision.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we did not have any other speakers sign up for this item. We just had two from the local government that are available for questions.
Great. Thank you, Chris, and I'll bring it back to our staff. I, I don't know that there's much to respond to there, but giving you the opportunity in case you'd like it.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schwing. Okay, so we will close the public hearing, and I will return to the commission. Are there any comments, questions, or a motion? Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the commission determine that Appeal Number A-5-HNB-25-0023 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603 of the Coastal Act. I recommend a yes vote, and if I could speak to my motion, that would be great.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Wilson, to the motion.
I just want to speak to something that I mentioned yesterday, which is sometimes people view these appeals as a bit of a hassle or something that sort of stands in the way of a developer moving forward through these things. But, you know, these appeals without cost, I, I believe that process moving through the commission actually offers a service to the local jurisdiction, in which case, if there was no appeal, that the local jurisdiction would move through in terms of the Coastal Act, then it's on them directly in terms of the interpretation of the Coastal Act and the expertise of their staff versus the expertise of this staff and the staff of the commission and, quite frankly, the state that's supposed to adjudicate that. And so all I'm saying is that it is much more difficult to litigate the, these types of appeals if it was just going to the local jurisdiction, that they would have to defend that versus coming through this filter. And so while this may take a little bit of time and some, you know, you know, 90 days in some cases, and sometimes less, and sometimes a little bit more, the, the service actually being provided by this review of these, of this appeal really helps the local jurisdiction in sort of defending their position in their interpretation of the LCP. So I just wanted to speak to that because oftentimes, people view these, these appeals and these processes through our commission as somewhat of a burden. But for local jurisdictions, this actually can be quite a benefit to them in terms of protecting them from future litigation for these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders. Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. No substantial issue has been found. Okay, so now that brings us to Item 17, the Deputy Director's Report for the San Diego Coast District.
Uh, thank you. And in this report, we are reporting on an emergency permit waiver that was issued to the City of San Diego for work to shore up an existing lifeguard station, including installation of temporary structural reinforcement for the existing structure and installing replacement structures for interim operations. And this is at 3141 Oceanfront Walk in Mission Beach, which is adjacent to Belmont Park. We're also reporting two waivers for projects in Solana Beach and Imperial Beach, three CDP amendments for projects in Carlsbad and San Diego and Oceanside, and one CDP extension in Oceanside. We aren't aware of any opposition to any of these items, and we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to the waivers, amendment, or the extension.
Thank you, Mr. Schwing. Are there any ex parte's? Any speakers?
We had one person sign up to speak, but we are not seeing them in Zoom, Ryan Gad. And then we also had one available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Do three or more commissioners object to any item in the Deputy Director's Report? Seeing no objection, the commission concurs. So that brings us to the end of our calendar today. We will adjourn to closed session, but before we do, I'd like to hand the mic over to Commissioner Wilson, who has a few words you'd like to say.
Thank you. I, this is, when I have meetings on this day, this is, as we know, September 11th. And there's a person that I want to mention that's from my past. And so I'd like to, if we can, at least personally, close today's meeting. I'd like, you know, to pause and honor, and I have some notes here, in the memory of Richard Guidagno. He was a 38-year-old manager of the Humble Bay Wildlife Refuge who lost his life on Flight 93 on September 11th, 2001. And he's believed to have been among the passengers that rushed the cockpit that day. Rich was known as a hands-on manager and a friend to all. He's the type of person who said what he meant and meant what he said. And sometimes maybe, you know, but he was very diplomatic, I would say. His colleagues remember him as the Renaissance man. I heard that a lot because he really, he really took on all aspects of this, of this job in terms of, you know, his interest in every detail, both macro and micro of the, of the natural world. And he had a significant hand in developing the Humble Bay Refuge Center, which bears his name now. He was known for being very inclusive. He had a mission to spark public interest in fish and wildlife itself. So he really wanted to get people, because he believed that the humans that interacted in those spaces would be the, would be the long-term protector of those resources, which he was very dedicated to. So he was in fish and wildlife for 17 years. He had a rich career. At the, at the time of his passing, there was no shortage of folks that were calling out his praises in his work. And I, you know, as you know, as a person who was... And, you know, as you know, as a person who was... one issue I have brought here before is billboards, and there were some on the Wildlife Refuge, and after he became manager, they weren't there anymore. And so I won't speak to the bureaucracy that maybe he didn't go to deal with that. So I just wanted to thank Rich for his service and his sacrifice and his dedication to both the nation and the community of Humble Bay. And that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Our thoughts are with Mr. Kudrow today. Okay, we will be closing and adjourning into closed session now. Can I just let Commissioners Lopez and Preciado know that the link went to their coastal email account?
Email was received. Thank you.
Thank you.